All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Town and Norfolk Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, March 12, 2024. We are here this evening at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room 124. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, notice was previously provided that we would be meeting here in this location. And that was provided on the town's website. Members of the public are welcome to attend the in-person here at One Liberty Lane Norfolk or remote via Zoom. Please note that if you are attending in-person. Wait, what is it? Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the remote connection. The Zoom link for this meeting was provided previously and posted on the town's website and through any notifications that you do have set up for automatic notifications. That is also the meeting link and the call-in number. Alternatively, this is being broadcast on NCTV livestream on the YouTube channel. We do have one of our board members is remote this evening, so because of that, we'll be doing our votes via roll call. So we'll just go around the room and introduce everybody. So we do have, we're going to start over here on my rights. We have our new associate member, Christian Guston. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
We have a member, Gary Sullivan, our vice chair, Chris Monford, myself, the chair, Chad Peck, our clerk, Eric Diamond. We have Melissa Mayo, who is remote, other board member. And that that kind of wraps up the board. And then we have our town planner, Richard McCarthy, and Betsy Fajol, our admin assistant. So that is, that is it for introductions. And to get the meeting started, we do have a continuance of a public hearing here at 7:00. I realize we're a couple of minutes behind schedule, but we do have a continuous of public hearing for 90, 92, 96, 100, 100R, Pond Street, and 12 Sharon Ave Solar Project. And it is for the site plan modification and storm water management permit, which was continued from our February 13th meeting.
We do have Nathan Collins on Zoom.
Excellent. Yep, we do have Nathan from Next Grid on Zoom.
And we have Stephen from Beta as well on Zoom.
Great.
I will say, since the last public hearing, we had convened a meeting between Beta and myself and Next Grid's team and went through the peer review comments. And then there was a back and forth. And there was a letter from Beta from yesterday that all the items had been addressed.
Okay. So I guess we will start with.
Turn it over to Nathan.
Yeah, we'll start with Nathan. We'll turn it over to Nathan, let him, let him start, and then we'll get Beta's response.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Nathan Collins, Director of Engineering with Next Grid. As Richard had noted at our last hearing, we presented the revised plans to the board. Happy to put those up on my screen and kind of go over those again. But as, as Richard noted, since our last hearing, we went through a couple of different rounds of review comments and we're, we're able to provide revised documents to satisfy all of Beta's original comments and some minor supplemental comments on the revised drawing. There were a handful of conditional permit approval requests related to test pits and the provision of a final SWIP from our site contractor. Once we, you know, submit for building permit and start putting shovels in the ground.
Okay. So let's hear from Stephen at Beta.
Good evening, everybody. This is Stephen Borgatti from the Beta Group. Nathan more or less covered the status of our review. The project's gone through a few rounds of review and the applicant has made many revisions to satisfy our comments. There were a few outstanding comments relating to test pits, erosion control and operation and maintenance, but after discussing with the client, those can most likely be conditioned as a condition of approval.
Okay, and those were noted. I'm just pulling up here.
I have the numbers. They would be SW 10, SW 12, SW 17, and SW 18.
Okay. Can you, whoops, can you repeat that again? SW, SW 12?
Yeah, sorry about that. So SW 10.
Yep.
12.
Yep.
17.
Yep.
And 18.
Okay. Rich, do you have that? Betsy, can you?
I'm gonna pull that up. Sorry, I didn't answer that in your pocket.
No, that's, that's fine.
Stormwater, SW 10 is up on the screen.
And which, which document is this, Betsy, that you're pulling up? Is it the?
This is the Beta review letter.
And what's the date on it?
Date is 3/11.
3/11? Okay.
So at 7:00.
SW 10 is here.
So those, those comments wouldn't be, I suppose, either be a waiver from it because it's not a, it's not a planned multi-lot development?
Right, that's right. It's not. For which, for S?
Yeah, so.
17 and 18.
17 and 18, right? Yep.
Yeah, if you scroll back down, I think it was even applicable to.
Yeah, there was another one, 17.
It was 12.
Yep.
Same thing.
...have the standing has been met for the multi-lot development.
What was 10?
10 does. Provide drainage pipes to be.
Class 4 RCP. So Nathan, in terms of that.
Yeah, go ahead. On that.
Presume you're requesting a waiver for the class, for the drainage pipes?
I don't, what condition did that fall under?
So it's SW 10, stormwater comment?
SW 10 was, I believe, just related to the depth of groundwater and just confirmation of the soil characteristics. On the March, the March 11th letter?
So, hmm.
That's what my SW 10 reads.
And if I could interject, I know on one of the other projects we reviewed, SW 10 relates to the drainage pipes. Do you have the correct letter that you're looking at?
Yeah, the top says Norwood on it. What else? Go to the top of the letterhead.
There's one that, are you talking about the one that's in the folder called Peer Review Response 3/1124?
Yeah, this is Shire Drive.
Yeah, because there is no SW 10 on, on this one. It starts at SW 12.
I just have 12.
That was my, I know, that was my mistake.
So Stephen, you'd noticed, you'd noted SW 10, but Nathan did not have SW 10 on his response letter? He started with.
No, but I do, I'm happy to share my screen.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't know if you have the incorrect letter up, but my SW 10 just reads, it was originally the comment was conduct the test pit in the footprint of each infiltration trench to confirm adequate soil characteristics in depth of groundwater. The original responded test, test pits as a condition and the approval will be conducted after clearing of the vegetation to confirm adequate soil characteristic in depth of groundwater. And Beta's latest response was that Beta defers to the town.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that response. I mean, I'm fine with what Next Grid is proposing. Betsy, in the Google Drive, there's a peer review responses, Next Grid?
Yep, I can just pull that one up.
There we go.
There's also one that was done on February 8th?
Right, this is the.
This is the most current, though.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm talking about the, the Beta portion.
Oh.
Yeah, that's Next Grid's most current, but Beta provided a follow-up letter on the same date.
Yeah, there is one from the 11th.
There's a letter from the 11th from, oh, there it is. Oh, that's. All right, so the.
Let me open it up and.
Do you have it open, Rich?
Yeah, just have the screen shared. Okay. Please stand by. Thursday. Someone maybe is. Is it not in here?
I don't see it in our drive.
No, it's not in the drive, actually. All right, so we'll switch to, we'll have Nathan's screen share then.
Nathan, can you screen share that Beta report? Do you have that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to. Hold on. Everyone see this?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
So this is the March 11th letter that is SW 10.
Yep.
That references those test pits.
And, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'm, I'm fine with, with Next Grid's response. Any other discussion on that? So then SW 12?
Correct, because it's also just related to test pits.
Right. So Beta recommends including an addition, include an additional test pit for sub, subsurface system number 7P. Beta recommends a condition that an agent of the town observe excavations for each infiltration system or basin to confirm design assumptions. Is, you okay with that, Nathan? Having someone from the town observe it?
We have no objections to that.
Okay.
It seems like it would be the same response to 10. Covers both.
Yeah.
Those will be completed by a third party.
Yep.
Regardless. And then 17. Was related to the, the final SWIP that I noted. You know, Next Grid will provide a, a final signed SWIP prior to a pre-construction meeting. And again, we have no reservations on that condition.
Yep. That looks.
And finally.
18.
18 was just reading the ONM plan, just a sign, a signed copy.
Okay.
And then a sketch of the BMPs, which, you know, is on our, your erosion control plan already.
Yep, okay. Did you work out the fencing with the, with that adjacent properly?
We've contacted them, but I have not heard back.
Okay, just curious.
Sure.
So right now, there's no, you're not proposing any site plan modification based on the fencing because you haven't.
That's correct.
Coordinated anything with them? Okay. I don't have any other further questions. And let me, Stephen, at you've, from Beta, those were the only outstanding issues, right? 10, 12, 17, 18?
That's correct.
Okay.
Of condition, so the SWIP, it was condition from the previous permit, the ONM. I would just want to, I would want to just, I have a, there is a draft decision.
Yes.
For you.
Right.
As well as the stormwater permit, but I'd like to just, just re-review that condition as well as the, you know, observation. There is conditions in there, but I just, so if you're, if the thought was to close the hearing tonight, that'd be fine, just subject to further review on those conditions. Just to make sure they're in line.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board or really anybody on Zoom?
No.
Or in the room?
When it comes to time, I'd love to just make sure that the waiver requests are in line with what they're actually looking for. Make sure that there's no copy paste errors or anything like that.
Okay, so hearing no additional comments, I'd like to, because we need to close the public hearing then vote on the decision, so I'd like to make a recommendation to close the public hearing.
So moved. Sorry.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the public hearing is closed. So now we're looking for, we need to do a review of this site plan decision.
And if you wanted, so a proposal to you.
Yep.
Is the, you could, I don't think it really impacts your time schedule to review it, and then you can vote at the April meeting. I don't think it, because they're, they're going to the ZVA next week.
Okay.
So the ZVA needs to issue their decision, and then after that, there's a 20-day appeal period, so they're not.
Okay.
Too far off, if you want to review it. Because I did, I did go through the waivers, there's a, so the, the sections have changed since then because we went through the recodification.
Yes.
So I was cross-referencing them, but I did notice a couple of waivers. I don't think you need, Nathan, because there was some waivers referring to the road.
Nathan still there? Yep.
Here, yep.
I think that. The summation is probably good, just to double check it, make sure everything's in order, if that's acceptable to the board, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it would be a good idea to, to give us a little time to review this and just to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
Yeah.
And then, and then do a final vote on the decision in April.
Just curious, we've got about seven minutes. Can we just run through these waivers real quick?
Let's do it. Yeah.
So a waiver is requested because overhead electric is required by the utility provider as part of the interconnection. That makes sense, Nathan, that tracks?
Correct.
Okay. Waiver is requested because, that's the same one. Waiver is requested to allow screening to be vegetative in lieu of a solid fence. That tracks, right?
Correct.
All right. Waiver is requested from the requirement of having a building with minimum footprint of 2,000 square feet pursuant to the opinion of town council. That tracks.
Correct.
All right. Schedule of dimensional requirements waiver from the side yard setback is requested for the common spelling error for the.
Yep.
Common boundary shared by parcel 196928, Town and Norfolk Water Department and parcel 196943 Interstate Realty Trust, the opinion of town council. That tracks.
What was the trust again? I'm sorry?
Interstate Radio Realty Trust.
That should be modified, actually, no, that's still accurate. That's correct.
Okay.
Then these ones are for Town Norfolk Rules and Regulations for Subdivisions of Land and Site Plan Approval. Requires that driveways meet the construction requirements for secondary street. Allow, that tracks. Allow cut slopes greater than 15 feet in height. Erosion control matting proposed. That's good. Walkways on existing roadways, proposed developments, not a subdivision, and there's already sidewalk on the opposite side of the Pond Street along the entire frontage of the site. That tracks.
You got a typo in there, too.
Where'd you see that one?
There is already?
Yep. Is and already, Rich? Between those two words. Plans required to utilize NGVD of 1929, current FEMA flood maps, utilize NAVD 88 sidewalks. That tracks?
Correct.
Sidewalks required, not necessary, is a sidewalk exists on the opposite side of Pond Street? It's fine. Stop signs at all point of egress. This is a driveway that is to be used by Norfolk Police Department spelling and the applicant only, but no longer by the Norfolk Police Department, so we can strike that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's accurate, yep.
Yeah, curb inlet stones required for catch basins. That's not an issue. You've got asphalt firm. Emergency overflow required for subsurface recharge systems, no suitable location to direct stormwater overflows. The system has been decided to accommodate 100-year storm with reserve capacity. All right. That looks good to me. Any questions on that section? None. All right. Everything else I looked at in here did not.
And Rich, you said you need to check all, reference all the numbers on those, right? Because of the modification?
I did put in the new numbers.
Okay.
But just wanted to give you one over, just one more check.
Yeah.
The ONM is in there.
Everything else kind of looks boilerplate.
Yeah.
And then you have the stormwater management permit in the back as well.
Yep, that's in order. I just want to look at the.
Which I don't have any issue with there. I think it's the, the minor modifications and then the confirmation of the numbers. And then I would be okay to vote this in at the next meeting after a quick review, just to make sure it's what it's supposed to be. And Nathan, just to confirm, we're still at 2,738 AC kilowatts.
Which page are you on for that?
Yes, the AC is not changing.
Okay.
Going back through, I think the only things, as I did mention, about clearing, you know, during the test pits before clearing and then observation.
You might be able to add that to number six. That looks like that. Same track. Uh, sorry, five.
Oh, yeah, actually. Yeah, I could just, you're right. I can just add it to that one.
Right, you can add that to five.
So actually, if I just add that to five, if you're okay with that, then you can just vote it and.
What, what about the signature by owner for the SWIP?
That's.
That's on 11, 11 has the SWIP.
11 has a SWIP, yeah.
So you need to add signature by owner.
Yep, we could add signature by owner on number 11.
That was for the operation and maintenance plan, the signature.
It was, you're right. So that would be under, you're right.
Actually, so that is already in there.
That's already in there, yep. Which is number six, yep.
So that was just adding about the clearing.
Yep.
So you could. Condition a vote if you're right. I'll make the edits and then you can sign it, if you'd like.
So you're looking for a motion.
It's all boiler.
Yeah. To approve the site plan application for decision number 2024-01 for 90, 92, 96, 100, 100R, Pond Street, and 12 Sharon Avenue. With the aforementioned edits made, adjusting the typo in the waiver request section for section 325-4.8, separating is and already, removing references in 325-8.4 of the Norfolk Police Department's use. Adding in the miscellaneous section, the oversight by our third-party engineer of observation of the test pits into section five. Oh, and a typo fix in section 310-5.1B with the words for slash common in the waiver request sections as well.
Yes?
So moved.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
We have a second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I've got a, one other related thing. Sometimes the permit decision number is 2024-1, and sometimes it's -01. It changes throughout, the header on the pages, say one.
So, where do you see that discrepancy?
Heads.
Oh, on the headers, I see that.
On the header.
So.
That's another clerical.
So you'd like to make.
A friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment? So, go ahead, make it.
To correct the decision number to be 2024-01, consistent with the title page.
And throughout the document.
Throughout the rest, remainder of the document.
So moved.
Second. All right, so, the, we do have a motion that's been amended, so we need to first vote the amendment. Any other discussion or changes? Okay. So first, first we need to vote the friendly amendment, so we're going to do that by roll call. So that was just to, the friendly amendment was just to correct the site plan decision number throughout the document. So we'll do that. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the friendly amendment's passed, so now let's vote the amendment to approve the site plan application with those modifications. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, we do have the decision approved, with the few edits.
And the stormwater? Permit next.
And the stormwater permit is, yeah, I messed up my whole packet, so, I'm looking.
I move to approve the stormwater management permit for the 9092, 96100, 100R, Pond Street, and 12 Sharon Avenue project, as noted in the site plan application decision number 20-2024-01.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm just taking a quick minute to look at the front part of this. Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, awesome.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Nathan, thank you, Steven.
Take care, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, so.
Almost on time.
Almost. All right, so 7:30, we have a public hearing to discuss the proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaw, so we'll have Eric read that in.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with chapter 48 of the Mass General Law that Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, at 7:30 PM, at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk to discuss proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaw, which have been submitted to the warrant for the 5, for May 15, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Complete copies of the text of the amendments are available for review on the Town of Norfolk website, or the Planning Board office during hours at 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. The articles are as follows. One, see if the Town of Norfolk will vote to amend Norfolk bylaw, section 310, 8.3, affordable housing development, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the following new language, or to take any action in relation thereto. Two, see if the Town of Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw by adding the following new language in bold print, and deleting the following strike-through language in sections of the zoning bylaw enumerated and displayed below as follows. Section 310, 8.5, Town Hill/Ponville MBTA Communities, Multifamily Overlay District. Two, section 310, 2, section 310-2.1, definitions. Three, sections 310-3.1, types of districts. Four, section 310-3.2, location of districts, or take any action in relation thereto.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. So we do have our public hearing open. We have those two articles that we're discussing, and there were, we, we discussed those as a board the past handful of meetings. And we've made edits along the way, and, and what's printed and proposed here is what we've, what we approved at our last meeting. Rich, do you want to give a quick overview on these, or? I mean, so the, the first one is to basically strike and remove the affordable housing development?
Sure. So in terms of the inclusionary bylaw, which also known as the affordable housing development bylaw, the proposed language, so as you mentioned, is to remove what's in place today, and then replace it with, which is in many respects back to what it was before the 2021 amendment to the inclusionary bylaw, which starts, would be going back to starting at 10 units or above, in terms of the starting point, rather than six, which is currently in the proposed bylaw. There would be a straight out 10% affordable provision, as opposed to scaling up, going from 10%, from six to 12, and then 13 to 19, 15%, and then above 20 or more units at 20%. And the rounding up, which was in the current bylaw, would be removed, it's just straight, it's a rounding down number. The permit presently, which is a special permit, would be a permit through the planning board, but it would no longer be a special permit. So it'd just be a permit that associated with the development that met that criteria. This would be townwide, as it is today, same as it was. And the rationale for, there's really two parts to this, so, this is, I will call it for the first step, which is to make it compliant with MBTA community zoning requirements. They publish, Executive Office of Housing Level Communities, formerly DHD, published guidelines, and the proposed changes comply with the guidelines in terms of what a 4% affordable could be. But, this also is, as I mentioned, step two, which is to take a look at this inclusionary bylaw holistically, townwide, in terms of some of the recommendations that were made in the housing production plan, to consider incentive provisions to create affordable housing, as opposed to the present system, which is really more of a takeaway density, so it, you know, it reduces the overall density in the development, which plays up against some of the financial component to it, in terms of viability of doing development, of a residential development nature, or even a mixed-use case. And, and the reason we're considering that is twofold. One is it was a recommendation housing production plan, but more recently, we have had a, which was a former open space subdivision, which is now being, they applied to mass housing to come in as a 40B development, which it would then have 25% affordable, but the proposed density went from 21 up to 51 units. So the, while there's a higher percent affordable, we overall end up with a much higher potential density development with, as presently designed, without any open space at all. The previous one had open space. And it's, really the way it's proposed design really dramatically affects the site in terms of how it'd be developed. So, and there are a potential, other projects that, in terms of, on the multifamily side, that are evaluating whether, if this, if this does pass, they would consider coming under the multifamily bylaws already present in place, which is over in the Pondville area of town, versus essentially skirting around our zoning and going 40B route. And again, it's, it's, it's really a, it's a financial, it's not a, you know, to make the numbers work, so that, these are some of the decision points. We thought that could potentially happen. You know, there is more indication now that that is a more of a real issue. It is not the only issue, but certainly when you start to layer in development and costs versus revenue, it really starts to weigh it down where it falls onto itself, and that's why that's considered a recommendation, so, that, I think that kind of surmises where we're at.
Yeah, that does, that, thank you for the, the overview, that really does surmise the, the key components of what brought us here to proposing this change. So, this is our public hearing, so that we got an overview of where we're at. I don't know, Sue, if you had anything you wanted to add, before we kind of opened up the floor?
Sure, I just wanted to add that we, that Rich has been attending for quite some time now, the Affordable Housing Trust meetings, and at our last meeting, I think it was very clear that the board is committed to trying to work with Rich and the planning board to look at some other options to create some more affordable housing outside of just an inclusionary zoning bylaw. So, you know, some other towns are creative. Peter Diamond's with us tonight, he brought us a tremendous, tremendous packet of information that Rich and I are reviewing, and he's got a lot of great ideas, and I think what we need to just express is that this isn't it, you know, this is the first step of something that needs to be done, but we will continue to work with Rich and the planning board and Peter, to see what, what other creative ways we can come up with, maybe providing some incentives to get us some more affordable housing.
Thank you, Sue. Can you just, I forgot to ask you, can you just state your, your role, your name and your role?
Sure, Susan Jacobson, Affordable Housing Director.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, just for the record, Peter Diamond is here tonight, he was, he was very instrumental in, 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 I guess, a citizens petition for, for the warrant change previously, which was back in 2001.
21.
2000, I'm sorry, 2021. So, that's why he, he was mentioned in here. So he was very instrumental in proposing the change that we do currently have, that is our current zoning bylaw. So I think it'd be fair to let, if Peter, if you wanted to say something, to kick it off.
Mind if I approach the board?
Yep, I figured it'd be good to have you say something, and then we can open it up to the rest, to the room.
I have some handouts. So I'll take a moment and hand those out. First, we're going to discuss the inclusionary zoning bylaw, is that correct?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, sure. And keep one for the minutes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. For the record, my name is Peter Diamond, I live at 84 Seacong Street, I've been a citizen of Norfolk for most of my life, and I am responsible for the citizens petition in 2021 that we brought to town meeting for a change in the inclusionary zoning bylaw, which is what we have right now, which is called somewhat of a scaled or tiered type of inclusionary zoning bylaw. And that works like, if you have six to 12, develop new housing units, there's a 10% affordable housing assessment, from 12, from 13 to 19, there's 15% assessment, and then when you go from 20-plus units, we go to 20%. That passed pretty strongly at the 2021 town meeting, which was held at the King Philip High School because of.
COVID.
COVID-19, so. Now I have some questions here to go through with the board. And to get started, I'll go right into question one. To be clear, the proposed change will entirely replace the inclusionary zoning bylaw that the voters of Norfolk approved at the Springtown meeting in 2021. That's correct.
That's correct.
Number two, to be clear, this new inclusionary zoning bylaw will be townwide, and you did state that previously in the opening of this public hearing. And number three is a question, why did the board decide to revert back to the old 10% bylaw that the voters of Norfolk changed just a few years ago?
So the, the response to that is, is really for two major reasons. One is that, to be in alignment with, with the new requirements, and also, we're seeing, we're getting comments and feedback from the developers that, that the current tiered system just doesn't, isn't economically feasible for them, and so they're looking at other alternatives like 40B, and, and skirting around our, our current zoning, just because they can't, they can't make it work.
Or just avoiding it altogether?
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and we've seen that in the number of, we've seen that in basically the decline in the, the number of applications for subdivisions have dramatically declined since this new bylaw went into place. And that's the feedback we're getting from them.
Thank you.
Can I add one more point to that?
I think it's also important to note that when Peter brought this bylaw forward, as Rich mentioned, we did suspect that this may result in some development coming forward as 40Bs because of the change, and we didn't have any clear indicators that that was going to happen. We now have two clear indicators of projects that came, came before the town one way, and came back significantly larger because of our inclusionary zoning bylaw. And while we do have other 40Bs in town that were done before this change, and they still came through as 40Bs, we know firsthand, because we've met with these individuals, that these two developments made very different decisions because of the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. And the next one's just a comment. There were approximately, there are approximately eight 40B projects approved in the last 10 years, and all of them were brought forth when our inclusionary zoning bylaw was 10%. In my opinion, a developer does a 40B to circumvent many of the local rules such as frontage, density, and road design, just to name a few. There are actually a long list of waivers for each 40B project. The eight-unit 40B project that was recently approved at Pine Street has 25 pages of waivers to our zoning bylaws. So in my opinion, it's just inaccurate to say our inclusionary zoning bylaw is the reason developers are going 40B. Next item on the list, number five, could.
Can you pause, pause for a second there? So, Sue wanted to say something, and.
Sure.
You know, I, I just think it's important to say that.
You know, we have had eight projects come before us.
Right.
With our old inclusionary zoning bylaw, but I think there are many factors as to why.
Sue's microphone isn't working.
Thank you, Melissa.
Those, those units did come in, Peter's absolutely correct with our inclusionary zoning bylaw being at 10%, but I think there were many other factors as to why they chose to go 40B instead of a traditional subdivision, and I think Rich could speak more clearly to that, but, you know, it, they absolutely can circumvent our, our bylaw. to that. But, you know, they absolutely can circumvent our our bylaws. And again, you know, we had a project that was going to be 21 single family homes that would have had to stay within our bylaws. But now they're coming in with 52 and going to be able to get all of the waivers that are needed for that development. So just just little pieces of information. Again, I think there's many layers as to some of why those developments. I did participate in some of the ZBA board meetings for those. But there's there's many different layers that are are in effect.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. While while some of them may be directly related, we'd have to dive into each one of the eight. And there's probably others that they chose to go that route for other reasons.
Well, in full transparency, the Pine Street decision is 25, 24 pages.
Yeah. How many waivers?
The whole entire document is not waivers.
Right.
So to suggest what you're stating here is that this 25 pages of waivers on the zoning bylaw is not accurate.
Well, how many waivers are in that?
Well, we can go back in it. But to state in your what you're stating here is not factually correct. So to say 25 pages of waivers, that's not accurate.
Somewhat accurate because it's
So it's misleading. No, I mean, it's misleading, frankly.
It's fair enough. I mean, what do you think there probably is a couple pages of waivers?
Maybe. But there's all different components. There's the Board of Health has regulations, Conservation has regulations, even building permits, all those things fall under there. So it's not just all zoning.
Right.
I think it's it again.
For clarification, it's a 25 page document, but only a handful of pages are waivers.
Okay. It'd be fair to say they're going for the 40B for more than inclusionary zoning because we have an eight unit.
And I did state that before, that they were going for more than just zoning. And some of those same pages are conditions for the approval.
Right.
Okay.
Can I just say, as somebody who does the feasibility studies for construction projects, and I work with a lot of different builders around here, not I know that in our town, like Sue mentioned, and and Rich mentioned, there are two confirmed developers who mentioned that they didn't go with our traditional with a traditional neighborhood, because it was more financially beneficial to them to go the other route. It is multi-layered, for sure, Mr. Diamond. But I will say, for friends in the industry, they don't want to build in Norfolk. And so in that, that is why. It's because of well, there are a couple of other things as well with our processes for permits and inspections. But aside from that, it really comes down to a few decisions with the bylaws. And that is one that they mentioned frequently, aside from stretch code, which we're not here to debate. But it's it's something that is mentioned often with people that are that build and develop.
Thank you, Melissa.
Number five.
Number five, yep.
Could have this board created an inclusionary zoning bylaw with the 10% assessment in the housing choice overlay districts and kept the existing scaled or tiered inclusionary zoning bylaw for the rest of Norfolk?
Yes. Yeah, we could have. We chose to keep it standard across the town. But yeah, we could have.
The next one is the town of Norfolk could have done an economic feasibility analysis to determine if a higher assessment other than the 10% inclusionary affordable housing would make the development infeasible. And that comment's pointed towards the MBTA housing choice districts. And the next, why did you decide to forego the economic feasibility analysis?
Sue, you Well, I think it's fair to say that Rich and I did approach the town administrator to discuss this. And there was a lot of unknown. This is this is very there's a lot about the new MBTA housing choice. I chuckle at choice. You know, there's a lot of publicity surrounding this. There are several communities that are fighting this, if you will. There's been lawsuits mentioned by the AG's office. And so it was really thought at that time, as we discussed it collectively, that we would wait to see what was going to happen with some of these other communities. We're still not really even sure what the end result is going to be about the MBTA housing community choice. Because it may they may the towns may lose in court, the towns may win in court. We just we just don't know. So collectively, that decision was made by by in a meeting. So I just there was discussion about it. I just want people to know that that was certainly something that was discussed.
So in terms of to aid in that discussion, the financial feasibility is an economic analysis to determine if the inclusionary bylaw makes the creation of housing affordable. We did. There has been a few published economic feasibility analysis done for other communities. And what we've seen so far, and maybe that changes, those communities have incentives above it. So they're not taken away. So they're not negatively impacting the financial feasibility of the projects that have a higher requirement. They're they're putting bonus provisions in there for additional. Now, there may be some other town out there, but I haven't seen it yet. And initial discussions when this was all that there was concerns that even at 15%, that might have pushed the numbers in terms of weighing down the economic feasibility. So it was it was based on in part, that was information that we had thus far.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Rich?
All right. The next one's a comment. I recommend at a minimum of keeping the fractional assessment of the zoning bylaw. Let me explain with an example. If there were an 18 unit development in the flat 1010 inclusionary assessment, which is build 10 houses, there's 10% assessment. And in the 18 unit development, the developer drops the 0.8 fractional unit, and there is only one affordable housing unit. That affordable assessment is actually now 5.5% overall, because the 0.8 or eight units go in the column of our total housing unit count. We lose ground towards our 10% state subsidized housing inventory requirement with drop in fractional units. So thereby, I ask that you take another look and try to keep fractional units.
Okay.
Does that make sense, the way I explain that?
Yeah, that makes sense the way you explained it. But that's not what we proposed. But that does make sense the way you explained it.
The next recommendation, I recommend that the zoning bylaw article be written with language that a higher percentage of inclusionary zoning could be used in the MBTA housing choice districts, if Norfolk could demonstrate that a reasonable variety of multifamily housing types could be feasibly developed at a higher percentage with an economic feasibility analysis.
So what do you mean by that?
Are you essentially proposing that for
Well, I watched the MMA guidance that came out just last week. And they said there were some towns that are putting some language in their zoning article that would allow a higher percentage of affordable housing in the these districts if we can prove that it's economically feasible to allow that.
So it's not necessarily allowing it's we're forcing it through the use of the economic feasibility studies showing that it would be a sustainable practice for the developer to do.
Correct.
Okay.
It's on per project.
So there are some towns have written this article that says it's 10% for now. But if we can prove in the short term that it's economically feasible, that we could apply a higher inclusionary assessment. Does that make sense?
It made sense.
Thank you.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So as an example of how Norfolk has been losing ground towards our 10% subsidized housing inventory, we're at above 6% subsidized housing inventory as we approached the 2020 census. Now Norfolk has dropped down to 4.2% subsidized housing inventory after our 2020 census.
Do those number I'm I just want to yeah, ask Sue if those numbers are
So Peter's correct. If you look at the subsidized housing inventory now on the state's website, it indicates it's 4.2. I'm not going to say that we're at six, but we're somewhere between there. Because what happens is when a project comes to town and it's permitted, and the town clerk gives it the seal of approval downstairs, if there's 10 affordable units, they automatically go on to our SHI. After a year, they fall off. And we all know that these projects aren't completed in a year. So every year in June, I get something from the state that asks me to provide any new subsidized housing inventory homes that have been added. And I take all of the occupancy permits from the developments when the affordable units have been sold, and they get put back on. So this number is always fluid. You know, for example, Lakeland, I'm sorry, the Village at Norfolk, the 10 affordable units, the last one closed a month ago. So there'll be 10 more units going on to the SHI. Lakeland Farms was put on when it was permitted, but those 11 units have come off of the SHI. So I think it's important to know that while I'm not suggesting we're at six, because our census did add some more market rate units, we're not at 4.2. We're somewhere in between. And that number is always going to be fluid.
Okay.
Should the submission only be once a year to update?
Yes, they they have you send it in once a year. You get a letter. And, you know, they're doing it for all of the towns in Massachusetts. Maybe it's easier for them that way. But that's how that's how I do it. So anything that's closed in that year, I provide them the information that goes back on. Now, so do the the new market rate units that are built within that development. So it's always the balls are always in the air.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And I'll just close this part here. I recommend at a minimum, this board have a double inclusionary zoning bylaw. One for the new districts and one for outside the districts. One for the MBTA housing choice district at 10% and keep our scaled inclusionary zoning bylaw for the remainder of town. If we do go back to the 1010 inclusionary zoning bylaw, we will not gain ground on our subsidized housing inventory when our 2030 census comes out in just six years. We'll have gained nothing, and we'll be subject to 40B development for years to come.
Yeah, I mean, that's that is a fair statement. I mean, we proposed one for the whole town to just standardize and streamline. We proposed one. We're also looking at other ways to incentivize affordable housing besides just this. So there are other developers that we're working with to to try and find properties to to offset this as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just one final question. There was two developers that approached the town for regular development, and they decided to go 40B because of the inclusionary zoning. And you said one was at Cranberry Heights, and the other is in Pondville?
In Pondville, yes.
On Valley Street?
Valley Street, Hill Street, Pine Street.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
No, thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Before we open it up, did the board have any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
So well, thank you very much, Peter. Appreciate that. We're going to open it up now to anyone in the room or anyone on Zoom if they would like to to speak. I do not see any hands. Okay. So if there are no other comments on this, we'll move on to Article Two.
And then come back and vote on them after? You want us to vote them separately or together?
You want us to vote? We could vote this now.
They are separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then let's just close this. Just finish this one out then. Or do we want to vote after we
We can vote afterwards. Yeah, yeah.
Let's close the public hearing and then vote on them.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we will we'll now talk about Article Two, which is vote to amend the for the MBA MBTA community, multifamily community.
Overlay district.
The overlay district, yeah.
The map.
The zoning map?
Yeah.
We'll put the zoning map up so you can see the areas. So in terms of the MBTA overlay districts proposed, I'll start with I guess it makes sense to start with the statute because that's where it all began. So what it said was that the MBTA community had to have a high density multifamily district with a minimum of 15 units per acre that was not age restricted, nor and was also available to persons with family. So it couldn't prohibit schools, excuse me, school these children. What occurred after the enactment of that, which was in the end of 2020, signed by the governor in 2021, DHCD, at the time, which is now Housing Level Communities, was charged with the task of drafting guidelines on how to apply the statute to all the cities and towns in the MBTA communities. And what came out of it was they have a Excel model that they developed to say, oh, sorry, back up, excuse me, for us, which our community here, which is a commuter rail community, you also had to have the zoning allow for the development of 750 dwelling units. So the by the framework of this multi MBTA community zoning, your zoning had to be able to the zoning could achieve that number. Now, underlying that, you still had to comply with Title Five when you're on septic. Of course, if you have sewer, that's a different formula as we as we talk about development. And when the guidelines were finished up at the end of '23, we applied for technical assistance through Mass Housing Partnership. We're awarded technical assistance in drafting a proposed bylaw in district. And one of the charges in the creation of the district was to utilize the setbacks that we have in the underlying zoning, the height requirements, the other dimensional requirements. So by doing that, what it did is our proposed district between the two areas, one in the center of town, then the other one in Pondville, the total amount of area is 81 acres, as opposed to 50. But if you but if you start to, you know, if you make things tighter, higher density and so forth, you can shrink the size, total area. But because we were trying to adhere to some of those dimensional principles that we already have, it's a little bit greater area. The area, I don't know if you want to just zoom in to the one in the center first.
So there's an area in the center of town.
Yeah, we'll start there.
That's, I guess, it's kind of got a green hatch. So it's like purple with a green.
Yeah.
Or it's red, I guess.
It's like a aqua.
It's red with a kind of an
See that there? There you go.
So there's three little three, four pieces?
Yep. So within that area, there are properties that are excluded. So they don't count towards that, which is town hall, fire station, the church, et cetera. Land that could potentially count towards potentially available for housing is areas that, you know, aren't restricted in terms of no ability to if we had town on land that we thought was going to be considered for housing development, we could include it, but we don't.
Right.
And then the wetlands get discounted out as well. So there's some land So there's some land deductions in terms of total area that counts towards it. Important part as we kinda move forward with this is that it just, it sets the framework for that area. The underlying, what's underlying, what's on the ground in, in many cases and within a proposed district, because there's already housing there today and there's other uses that are being utilized on those properties. So this bylaw, it doesn't say that that's what it's gonna be. It just has to allow for it like any zoning bylaw. So it sets the framework. It doesn't mean that we're gonna have all that turned over to multifamily development because quite frankly, there's already housing underneath it. Which, you know, some people argue that doesn't really make much, make much sense, fine. However, that can, that is permissible. So that's, so the areas that we're talking about are the condominiums up on the hill. There's the village of Norfolk on the other side of the tracks. Um, it does come down right up to the tracks next to the station, the center of town, which presently is just the former Grossman Building that's there. And then I know Peter has, your dad has property in, to the east and there's houses there. So that kind of encompasses the, the town center area.
Right. And then we have a Pondville area.
We have a Pondville. My assistant has to pause me, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I need you to go to the Pondville area.
Through the chair, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, yeah, we can hold there.
Yeah, we can pause there.
In the last meeting on the map, you showed all this land in here.
Yes, good point. So that was not?
So in February, that, I was focused on that that was included, but it doesn't appear to be on this map.
And it's, it was not intended to be included.
That was, that was incorrect.
That's quite confusing because I thought everything over the bridge, going towards Franklin, on left and right, all the way to Boardman was in the map that you showed in February.
It was not, it was on there erroneously.
I thought it was on the map that you posted on the?
It was, it was.
Public notice too.
Correct, which was an error.
But not tonight.
That's right. So that is?
That was posted in there because back in January, we, we just, at the January meeting, we discussed this. It was either January or December meeting, we discussed.
It was actually February. So that, that, what you see there was wasn't intended and was voted on in February. What, point of fact, what happened is when the consultant took the shape files from one consultant to the other one, they had that, that polygon area in there. So it was brought?
Sorry for my confusion because I was creating my thoughts on the maps that I saw that included everything over the bridge towards Franklin.
Oh, okay.
On the left and right of Main Street, which include 194 Main Street, Burks.
Yeah, no.
Included Olafland Building, it included the post office, it included 220 Main Street, it included 201 Main Street, 175 Main Street, everything all the way to Boardman Street, including two properties, these two properties here in the red.
Right, yes.
But that's taken out now, just to be clear.
To be clear, yes, it's taken out, yes.
And we're still at 81 acres.
It was still 81. That is the 81 acres when you see there in the other piece. That would've been more than 81 acres, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome. I was pretty unhappy to see that, that made it through there, I will say, between the two. So we're here to?
That's good to, good to point out because that was shown back in February and that was not correct.
It's really hard to see the maps with all those colors.
Yeah. And they, I feel it's better, but it's still hard.
It's better. It's not.
So you said that the interactive piece of this is using the town website and the overlay and then it actually shows the district name. It'll say C1 or?
Yeah, so.
And the, the printed version of this that we're looking at is not interactive and doesn't give you the naming.
Correct, yeah, it's not, the printed version is not as good as when, so if this was to get adopted, it's much clearer because you could take layers on and off and you can see the boundaries here. But they did, they did make adjustments to the coloring here to try to make it a little bit better than it was. And we'll tell you the, well, first of all, the one that was posted, that was the, through the, the Word doc, really was, the color was really bad.
Yeah, it took me all weekend to match it up with, without the colors, to pull every property out of it.
Yeah.
I did, I can read every property up there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I guess the good thing was is that we have a better map.
We do have a better map and it is correct.
Which will be part of the, which will be part of the warrant. And that's the?
Thank you.
The map that's going to town meeting.
And then we have another location, if we're done with that, we have the Pondville site.
Yes.
Let's see if you wanna scroll over to that. So we have Pondville site that's, I guess, surrounded by, what is it, Pine Street, Valley, Hill? Yeah, and the, and the old rail bed.
If you wanna zoom in.
Yeah.
So that's the one that's a light purple with yellow.
It's yellow over purple, yeah. It's a?
So it's Valley over Hill.
Yeah, Valley over Hill, just straddles one side of Hill. So essentially, what, the, the properties that are within that area is, well, one is the, there's a bunch of condominiums already there, existing. Um, and then they're working on in the center part of Hill Street, there's duplex units that are going in right now, which are eight, there are 18 units there. And then, I guess on the south side of Hill Street, there's three properties. One is a single-family home, one's a warehouse building, and then to the east is a, another commercial building. And then as you head up, there's, there is a vacant, the one vacant piece that's in here above the Hill Street development is, is one piece that the developer is looking to come in under the multifamily zoning. I don't think when you apply, when you come under the zoning bylaw, then you have, you also have the wetland bylaw, which then creates the buffers from the, the wetland boundary, the 50-foot buffer, then 100-foot, so forth. So even though it's, it will be higher in terms of units per acre, the actual buildout's gonna be probably not much different than what's out, that would be proposed. Because it would hopefully come under our zoning bylaw, not, not a 40B. If it comes under our, um, and that's, again, the, even though it's a multifamily high-density bylaw, it's still gonna fall under the other zoning bylaw requirements that we have, those don't get thrown out with development. Which makes this puzzle very complicated for the public at large, quite frankly.
Are you gonna come up with a better map?
Better map?
People at home to really understand where that is, the people of Pondville?
People, I actually have?
Or would you allow me through the chair to point some of them out?
If you wanna screen share with me, I can show you. A screen share, I'll have a slide that I put together for the public. That I think is better. So people can see it.
So it's not gonna show up there, it's gonna show up on this screen, on these two TVs here.
Yeah.
Because she's sharing it to the whole Zoom.
Okay.
Just, so you might wanna?
I know where it is.
Okay.
So if I go, so this one, that map is there too, but this one here, oh, yeah, you can't see it, but.
Yeah, I'm quite familiar with it, I just thought it'd be fair to show the people at home.
Sure, and then this?
Live in Pondville, what, what properties are actually subject to this high-density, multifamily-only development?
Can you make it full screen or get rid of the previews on the left?
Yeah, let me do a slideshow, right? Sorry, right there. Is it bigger there?
It is bigger there, yeah. Still kinda hard to see, but.
It's the orange one, yeah?
Yeah, the, it's the orange. It's the orange.
It's the orange, correct. So, um, these are the three properties I mentioned before that are?
So it's like Fran, Dan and the?
This is four, six and eight Hill Street, so a single-family.
Yeah.
Warehouse building, commercial building. This one where my cursor is, is Seven Hill Street.
Right.
Which is the 18 duplex units.
Yep.
These are the duplexes here that are, are existing on Valley Street. This piece here?
Mm-hmm.
Is, um, potentially being considered for the multifamily development that I mentioned.
Yep.
All right.
Then what's that little, what's the little square that you left out on Valley? The little rectangle?
Hill.
All the way to the east on Valley, the north, that one, yeah.
There's nothing, that one's not in there. It goes this way?
No, 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 up.
That's right.
Abutting to the rail?
This?
Yeah, that one.
Number nine.
There's a house.
Okay, so that's a house, okay, thank you.
This is 25 Valley and I think the numbers go up from there. Todd Ruine has this construction?
Yes.
Company there. And he's proposing a self-storage facility on, uh?
19 Valley.
19 Valley? And then what's the last one on Valley?
As vacant.
That's currently a vacant lot?
Yep.
Okay.
How many acres is that of the 81?
That one's 20.63 acres.
The whole district?
For that, that one there, yeah. And then the center of town is 60 acres.
Okay.
So I think this kind of, you can see a little bit better because it's, the arrow's underneath it, what's there.
Sue, did you have a question?
Just a suggestion, Rich, are you, are you, well, I understand they'll be in black and white. I don't know if there's a way to identify them, but are you gonna put the maps in the warrant? Or are you just gonna have them as handouts?
It's gotta be handouts.
It's gotta be handouts.
Because the black and white in the warrant.
They're gonna have to be color.
Yeah, we're not doing black and white.
Okay.
There'll be, there'll be handouts.
Okay.
But maybe not even the entire map, maybe just enlargements of that specific area.
I think we, I think that it should be drilled in.
I think maybe if you could, in the warrant article?
Yeah.
Drive people to the website before the meeting and have the handouts there. I just think it will help with questions.
Yeah, and that was the intention after tonight to put out the, um?
Can you show yours again?
So.
This is the Pondville, all highlighted. The yellow is high probability for re, for development and redevelopment.
Yep.
Blue shading, probably not gonna be redeveloped, that's Seven Hill Street, that's?
It's already developed, recently developed, yeah.
So, um, and I'll, I'll give, I'll give this over to the chair at the end. I like that because it doesn't burn my retina.
Right.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is the blow-up of the whole area.
Yeah.
And it shows all the properties that are considered for the, for that area.
I mean, Rich, maybe we almost need to consider like a three-page, one showing the whole thing and then, and then having an arrow like with the, with the, say, C, C page two for this, a blow-up of the downtown and C page three for a blow-up of Pondville.
Yes, absolutely.
So you got the whole thing and then you got blow-ups of the two areas.
Is there value in the whole map to have most of the map except for the areas we're talking about in black and white and then just have the areas we're talking about be in color? Like, do we need all the colors that's on that map?
Yes.
There's a separate article to adopt this form of data, isn't there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you do have to.
And that could be a different exhibit.
Well, you could do as an exhibit, yeah, you could, yeah, you could, we could take the layers off of it, so it?
I'm just, I'm just trying to, like, we wanna, to Chad's point with the three pages, we wanna draw attention to the big picture and drill down into the two little pictures. So there's no ambiguity about what's going on or what's impacted. I think that's what Mr. Diamond's picture is so effective because it just shows it, like, you can?
Zoning's hard enough to begin with, you're gonna show someone a map that's all these different colors and say, "We're doing it here."
Yeah, right.
We'll look at you like, when you, where, what?
Yeah, it's, it's almost like a Werewaldo exercise.
It is difficult, but?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've already, we've already complained about this map to death, but there's four shades of purple. I didn't know there were four shades of purple.
Different crosshatching.
And that's why we're having this public hearing?
Yes.
To discuss this and, and get the feedback and comments so we can make this easier to, to present to the town so that everybody does understand what they're voting on.
Yes.
Okay. We could definitely, definitely do that.
Rich, I liked your slide deck. I looked through it and, you know, I think there's an important point and I've had so many questions from residents about this, which is that the zoning is not necessarily, it's just zoning and some of it's already built and already dense. So it's not necessarily going to be 100%, you know, new buildings, new units. Some of it's already built, it's just zoning that we're kind of putting on top of that as the overlay district. Which, that's what most people are confused about, the people that I talk to anyway, or the ones that reach out on Facebook or anything like that. So I think what, uh, what Gary proposed, just having just the lots would make perfect sense, but then maybe we could show, you know, the ones that are actually potentially developable in the near future would be helpful. And I'm happy to work with you on that if, if you want help with the, the visual aspect.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. I said, so the, I do have a PowerPoint, like I said, there's a 30-deck slide, but I'm gonna have it on the website so people can go through it, which goes through in much more detail in terms of the housing choice. And then there is a slide deck in there.
Was there a couple key slides that, that'd be helpful to show?
If you don't wanna spell 30, Chad, talk to me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's worth going through all 30 slides.
Yeah.
But is there?
It's not worth going through all 30 because we can all review them in our own time, but?
No, you can review them, but there is a slide deck in here that I put in terms of, because the question came up, we did the zoning changes in 2021 and for the center of town and why did that not, why didn't, why does that not comply? And it doesn't comply for a couple reasons. One, when we did the zoning, we went through that whole study, but we wanted to provide additional density in the center of town, but not overwhelming density. So, you know, we kept the height down to three stories. We didn't go for it because you remember, people are like, "We don't wanna see with wall pole." So we kept three sto, so when you start to, you know, pull things in, um, we couldn't, that density would have not produced the same unit capacity that end up coming up, the requirement through the, um, through the guidelines. And then the other major piece, which is the major piece, is that we do allow mixed-use residential by right, but it's not a standalone use. So multifamily in the B1 is not allowed use under the B1 zoning. Which, again, is another piece that why our B1 zoning doesn't comply with housing choice.
Right.
That, those are two, they're really, those are the ones that really stand out. So there's a slide about that in there too. And then there's other, the documents that you've been reviewing, they're on the, so we have MBTA Communities Web Project page and then those documents have, will get people to there, they can look at it through this. I don't know, but we will absolutely need work on a handout for town meeting because?
We definitely will need work on that. So, so the slide, the slide that you're talking about is not online yet, or is it already?
No, we're gonna put it up there tomorrow.
So it'll be?
Everything else is up, everything else is there.
Yeah, I didn't recall seeing it up there. I lo, I saw a few other things.
I waited till tonight, and then I'll put it up tomorrow.
Okay, great.
But.
Awesome. Um, Peter, you look like you had another call.
Yeah, I have a list of, if, I could pass these out, Betsy.
So while we're passing this out, does anybody else in the room or on Zoom have any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. See any?
I spent most of my weekend studying everything happening here in Norfolk with this housing cho, choice.
Okay.
As, uh, to chuckle, choice, right?
All right, Peter.
Yep. Go ahead. All right, thank you. So just to be clear, this article is for multifamily housing only in the two housing-choice overlay districts, that being the Town Hill, which is town center area, and the Pondville District, which appears to be from the map on Valley Street and Hill Street. And I think, um, Rich confirmed that, it's multifamily housing. And the definition of multifamily housing is three or more units, I believe, in the new definition.
Yes.
Okay, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, known as EO HLC, or I heard it referred to as HLC the other day, recently determined mixed-use could be part of the housing-choice zoning. The mixed-use zoning would be consistent with our current B1 zoning that Rich was just talking about, that we worked on tirelessly for years to approve at the 21-town meeting, and also with our master plan, which was drafted on what the people in Norfolk wanted, mixed-use. And for those at home that don't understand what mixed-use is, that's a mix of commercial, generally on the first floor, with residential on the second floor, sometimes it's commercial in front of the property with residential in the rear of the property. And why did we not pursue the mixed-use in our Town Hill overlay district?
So we did.
You did.
And we were denied.
You were denied.
Yes.
By HLC?
Ah, HLC. And the reason why we're denied is because we require parking for residential in our district. They, one of the requirements for, again, four choice of words, mandatory mixed-use, MMA, uh, you know, mandatory mixed-use. You can't require parking for the residential.
You can't, you said?
Yeah, you cannot require, and we do. We do allow waivers, and you could make a case where if you have commercial that's using, that maybe doesn't use parking in the evening, you can share it. But that's not something that was, um, and also, in addition to that, I was told, we don't really have a, although we've been doing good work here, and we are developing in the center of town, the mandatory mixed-use is really geared towards communities that already have, have developed, in terms of that requirement. In addition to that, what it would have done, it wouldn't have reduced the area, it would have just lessened the total unit capacity number with the zoning, but they denied ours because we don't, we didn't comply on it, on the parking. And with also, as our mixed-use, we required 35% commercial to residential, and that ratio was too high as well, so we weren't able to use it.
Thank you.
So we did try.
Housing-choice guidelines call for 15 units per acre. Our current B1 zoning allows 16 units per acre. The zoning article has 18 units per acre. Please explain why our current downtown B1 zoning does not meet the housing-choice requirements, and please explain why we're at 18 units per acre rather than 15 units per acre. I think you just explained quite a bit why our downtown B1 zoning doesn't comply because of the mixed-use, right?
Right.
How did we end up at 18 units per acre?
So the 18 ended up because we're going with our height requirements, our setback requirements, and we also have, um, within the B1, we have a footprint limitation, too, as well. So when you add those requirements, then, because it's a balancing between, you know, getting that, hitting that unit capacity, potential build-out, and the zoning, so that's where, excuse me, we had to increase the units per acre.
Thank you. The Housing Choice Initiative is designed for multifamily housing for families. Can you tell us how many bedrooms will be required in each unit? Should Norfolk expect at least three bedroom, bedrooms per unit? Can Norfolk limit the number of bedrooms per unit?
So you can't limit the number of bedrooms. Excuse me, that, that goes against, um, fair housing in terms of allowing for families, so you, you can't do that. Um, in terms of the number of bedroom, it's really gonna be a, a function of, you know, for the center, right now, they have to rely on, it's, it's septic, so, you know, you're gonna, you gotta comply with Title V, same thing with the, in the Pondville area, so the, the bedroom count is gonna be based on what you could do septic-wise on the build-out.
But we are exploring sewer for the downtown.
We are exploring sewer for the downtown, yes.
All right. Please explain why our overlay zones equal 81 acres when they only required to have 50.
I think you did touch it.
You already touched on that?
You touched on that, yeah.
To get to the quote, yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of these questions, Rich, I already touched on, but I'll just go through them. I have read about an action plan for the housing choice. Does Norfolk have an approved action plan with EO HLC? And please explain what an action plan is.
We do have an approved plan. Um, the action plan is the roadmap for which the town is going to try to comply with housing, well, pardon me, excuse me, MBTA Communities. So within that action plan, we, we identify that we're gonna try to do this zoning in the spring of this year. If it's, um, if it does not pass in the spring, we will have a potential, another opportunity in, in November, and if it doesn't pass then, then we're, then we'd be deemed non-compliant. So by putting in that action plan, we're, we're still compliant right now.
Okay, I have read that we should submit for district approval to EO HLC at least 90 days prior to our town meeting vote. Have we submitted our district compliance application for approval? Please explain.
So, yes, no? In terms of filing, depending upon the outcome of today, um, submit it. Yes, it will be, uh, it's within 90 days. But we'll tell you, they're, they're not really hitting the target with the other towns already, so they're.
Right. They're flexible with that?
Yeah.
Who might?
We might hear, so the, similar to the AG, because it goes, we'll go the AG, 90 days, they have 90 days, so we could end up here and in between.
And on that AG, so there's a two-step approval process. We need approval from, uh, EO HLC and the Municipal Law Unit of the Attorney General. Is Norfolk prepared to acquire these two approvals? Please explain.
We are prepared in terms of we'll submit, like we normally do, the AG and then Executive Office. Um, I will say that there are towns that, if you go on the AG's website, they have, there's already towns that have submitted, and their, their zoning, and they've, their letters are up there, so take a look at it if you like.
Thank you.
And they did, there are some communities that while they were, they being the AG, was okay with what was proposed, had advised the towns that HLC may not approve, because there had, I think it was one town had industrial district, and advised them that might not be suitable for multifamily housing, and, but that's an HLC. So we'll have to wait and see, but yes.
So you're working on it?
Yep.
In the zoning bylaw, you have many waivers to, not many, we'll say, I think, two or three waivers to zoning requirements in the, uh, B1 downtown, and also for the, uh, C-1D off-highway. Uh, the waivers are important aspects of our zoning, such as the build-to line, building scale, lot size, lot coverage, and parking, just to name a few. Would it not be better to have definitive zoning guidelines for these housing-choice overlay districts? I did, I did watch the February meeting where Chad was concerned that you're gonna have to redo all the B1 zoning, and you had the option to do waivers or redo all the B1 zoning. I gotta say, I'm concerned that, with all the waivers, with a laundry list of zoning requirements.
Understood. In terms of the approach we'd have in the waivers, is we had, we did had a, we had to apply the standards in terms of, it could end up being strictly a residential multifamily development. So some of those requirements may make sense and some may not, so that would.
Such as the build-to line?
Yep.
Having a three-story residential house six to 19 feet from the road might not be a good fit?
May not be.
Yeah, it was, it was to provide some flexibility for the board, depending on what was, what the developer came that was economically feasible, so it gave us an option to be flexible on that, and it gave the developer option to, for some flexibility, too.
But at the same time, it could be a multifamily housing on the same lot that would be commercial, so we wanted to be able to balance the two, so, you know, in terms of requirements within its own site, but then as it relates to the outside of the site.
I must state, I was a bit more concerned with this fact when the map you posted showed all the property, um, going towards Franklin on the other side of the bridge. The map you showed today only has three or four properties likely to be developed.
Yes.
You did a good job with that. So in the B1 core downtown, the build-to line is six to 19 feet, with a building height of 46 feet, for example, and, uh, this comment comes from that statement I just made, how can the planning board be consistent with building design throughout the downtown area with waivers built into the, the bylaw? So my concern was basically, you have, for example, you have 220 Main Street that's just six feet off the sidewalk. So, and I, I was trying to envision how you're gonna develop, your vision for developing everything else coming towards the town or in the town. Are we, are you gonna come with a hardened fact line that you want them to build to six to 19? Or we're gonna allow setbacks, for example, so, so we wouldn't have, like, a staggered street skate, buildings, one's close, one's back, one's close.
Yeah, I mean, that would be.
Be tough to manage that.
No, you bring up a good point. It would be tough to manage that, but it's also, it, it would be something, when the developer comes, we would have to definitely look at that and, and provide some recommendations on how to do that, and it's also providing, you know, it's like, if we were to put together some sort of a strict guidelines today, that might not be, let's just say, this, this zoning article is, is still in effect 20 years from now, um, if we put strict guidelines into place for very specific items, that may not be valid 20 years, or even 30 years from now. So that's, that's kind of part of the, the flexibility, but giving us the, um, the option to provide waivers as needed that would fit and work.
Thank you. Number 11, comment, "The housing-choice districts are actually at a higher density, 18 units, without the 25% affordable unit assessment of a 40B development. Boyd's Crossing is 40 units on nine acres with less than five units per acre. The Village at Norfolk, which is in the center by the tracks, is 32 units on seven acres, which is also less than five units per acre. At 194 Main Street, where Norfolk lost its favorite breakfast place, Fork's Restaurant, this Plan 40B project has 36 units on 2.57 acres, which is 14 units per acre, close to the housing-choice guidelines of 15 units per acre. The housing density of these housing-choice districts exceeds that of our 40B developments with only a 10% affordable assessment." I'll just pause there if I can go on.
You can go on.
Comment, "If the 40B developments are feasible at 25% affordable assessment, I would expect that an economic feasibility analysis would show Norfolk's current scaled or tiered inclusionary zoning bylaw would be feasible also. Again, I urge Norfolk to do the feasibility analysis." And number 13, "Can you explain the vote needed to pass these two articles? Is it a majority or two-thirds vote? They're two separate articles."
Right.
Uh, the housing choice would be a majority vote. I'd, I'd have to talk with town council on the, on the inclusionary, if that's also a majority vote.
My gut, my gut says majority, but we would need to confirm with town council.
I think if we're doing, if you're including zoning outside of housing choice, that would be a two-thirds.
Right, right, so I, yeah. We, we'd need to confirm with town council.
Thank you.
Yep.
"Will there be an outreach or workshop for the citizens of Norfolk on this big change? Zoning is difficult to understand." I know you did mention that. It, it really helped the people around town to have a workshop. This is, this is, um, gonna develop our town center and Pondville. And number 15, "Could a video be made depicting what these overlay zones may look like?" I don't know if some of you have been here long enough, there was a video that depicted what we wanted to do with the build-out some years back, when we wanted to put a bridge, a, a bridge coming over to line up with Boardman Street. That was really helpful for people to see that video and see the vision of what, what might happen with these changes, just a recommendation.
Okay.
I don't know who did that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, a video is, is, would be very beneficial, I just don't know if we have the, the budget to do that, and in the, also in the timeframe.
Mm-hmm. So the workshop would be helpful with.
The workshop, yes.
With some better maps.
Yep.
In closing, "I do not recommend or suggest that the voters of Norfolk reject this MBTA housing-choice zoning, like Milton did, but I do think the planning board could draft better language in the zoning article."
Okay.
And I wanna thank, I wanna thank every one of you. I, I watch your meetings, they're three hours long, that's, that's a long meeting. It's long for me to sit at home and watch it, and I want to thank you for volunteering your time. What you do here is extraordinary.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the detailed input as well.
Yeah.
A lot of homework.
I did.
Yes, thank you very much, Peter, for, for all this info, and, and working with us on this, and, and, you know, that's the whole point of these public meetings, is to, uh, to help everybody, you know, on the call, in the room, understand it's been, it's recorded, people can watch it, and, uh, so thank you again. All right, um, any other questions, comments, uh, before we close the public hearing? I see none? Betsy, do you see any hands? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Well then, I would like to entertain a motion. Okay, well then I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for the zoning, Norfolk zoning bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Peter? Eric? Mr. Eric, Mr. The other Mr. Diamond in the room?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So public hearing is now closed. We will now proceed with voting on the two articles separately. So the first article that we have is, I don't have an article number, but the first article is two, let me just read it off of here. So I'd like to entertain a motion to see if the town will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Norfolk zoning bylaw, section 310-8.3 Affordable Housing Development by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the new language as, as written.
So moved.
To have a second.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will, I'd like to entertain a motion for the second article, which is for the Norfolk zoning bylaw, to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw by adding the following new section 310-8.5 Town Hill Pondville MBTA Community Family Overlay Districts with strike through language and new language in bold as printed.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Rich, do we also need to vote to approve that map or is that part of the second?
The map is in-
Or is that part of the-
Yeah, so the second article includes the four different sections.
It does.
What have you?
And they can vote those that as one group, right?
What, right, it includes the four sections.
But you want it, but-
But-
Yes, but you want to include the map. You're talking about that's on this tonight?
The map that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Section-
Three.
10, 3, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 118, 119, 120, 121, 122, 123, 124, 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, 137, 138, 139, 140, 141, 142, 143, 144, 145, 146, 147, 148, 149, 150, 151, 152, 153, 154, 155, 156, 157, 158, 159, 160, 161, 162, 163, 164, 165, 166, 167, 168, 169, 170, 171, 172, 173, 174, 175, 176, 177, 178, 179, 180, 181, 182, 183, 184, 185, 186, 187, 188, 189, 190, 191, 192, 193, 194, 195, 196, 197, 198, 199, 200, 201, 202, 203, 204, 205, 206, 207, 208, 209, 210, 211, 212, 213, 214, 215, 216, 217, 218, 219, 220, 221, 222, 222, 223, 224, 225, 226, 227, 228, 229, 230, 231, 232, 233, 234, 235, 236, 237, 238, 239, 240, 241, 242, 243, 244, 245, 246, 247, 248, 249, 250, 251, 252, 253, 254, 255, 256, 257, 258, 259, 260, 261, 262, 263, 264, 265, 266, 267, 268, 269, 270, 271, 272, 271, 272, 273, 274, 275, 276, 277, 278, 279, 280, 281, 282, 283, 284, 285, 286, 287, 286, 287, 288, 289, 290, 291, 292, 293, 294, 295, 296, 297, 298, 299, 300, 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, 306, 307, 308, 309, 310, 311, 312, 313, 314, 315, 316, 317, 318, 319, 320, 321, 322, 323, 324, 325, 326, 327, 328, 329, 330, 331, 332, 333, 334, 335, 336, 337, 338, 339, 340, 341, 342, 343, 344, 345, 346, 347, 348, 349, 350, 351, 352, 353, 354, 355, 356, 357, 358, 359, 360, 361, 362, 363, 364, 365, 366, 367, 368, 369,
We are, um, this property line right here. It's, uh, this is residential and this is the C1B district. And there is a 50-foot buffer zone, basically, that we have to hold from any development to that, um, property because it is zone residential. So we basically kept our pavement lines at that 50-foot setback to provide that buffer. If you want to go to the next page. So this is our grading and drainage utility plan. Like I mentioned when we started, this, this property was, um, part of the Shire Industrial Park subdivision. And one of the kind of main, uh, pieces that we, uh, were looking at when we started this project was what are we going to do with stormwater and the requirements for that? Um, so we reached out to Rich and Betsy and we looked at, we asked for the original subdivision plans and kind of see what they designed, um, the subdivision for. And basically this lot was designed with a drainage tub, um, to tie into the existing, to the street drainage in Shire Drive. Basically to accomplish that, we regraded the site to basically flow from north to south, um, and capture the runoff, um, with catch basins and pipe it out to the street to connect into the street drainage, which goes, um, into the drainage system for the, for the subdivision. Basically, most of the, um, the area where there is parking, it's going to be paved. The outdoor storaged area, the fenced-in area, that's basically just going to be millings. It's not going to be, it may, uh, right now it's just millings. And like I mentioned, we just got it, um, she flowing to the catch basins we've got proposed there. And a riprap slope basically down the, the western side of the site just to meet the existing grades. We're showing, um, an industrial wastewater holding tank for, um, the floor drains. Um, you need that anytime you've got overhead doors. Um, so we're showing that. We have an E1 pump, um, proposed for the sewer to connect into the, the sewer force main for the development. A transformer, uh, new, um, domestic and, um, sprinkler fire line, um, proposed. I believe when they built part of this, they might have stubbed in, um, the water stubs already. Not entirely sure if that's complete or not. So the locations that we're showing are approximate, um, based on the design plans. And then basically on the, the south side, we've got a retaining wall, a concrete retaining wall just off the edge of the pavement and millings, um, just for grading purposes down to meet the existing grade with the site. I believe it's Seven Shire, which was just built recently. That's what we've got for that.
How high is that retaining wall? Does it vary in what?
It, it varies. I think the max is about three, three and a half feet. And then the next page. Let me go to the next, um. Uh, so this is just our landscaping plan. Um, we're showing some screen, screen trees, um, basically at the top of the slope at the limit of work, um, of the pavement, um, as we are doing some clearing, um, within that 50-foot setback to the residential buffer. There's a, the green belt requirement, um, in town. So we, we are proposing some screen trees in that area as well as, um, um, various shrubs, um, throughout the, the site. That's, that's basically in short, um, a quick summary of this. We did get the, um, review letter, um, from Beta. I believe we got it yesterday. Briefly looked at it. I mean, there's, um, there's some, some comments, um, that we'll go over, um, in a meeting with Rich and Beta. But I think one of the, uh, one of the other ones I wanted to talk about was the waivers that we're requesting for this. The first waiver was for, um, the traffic, the impact studies and assessments. Basically, we're, we feel that this, um, fits with the development as it was attended. It's a industrial area, um, and proposing commercial building contractor headquarters, basically. So it doesn't feel like it's going to add, um, that much extra traffic to the area than would have been expected. Another one is for the walkway along the frontage. On the opposite side of Shire Drive, there's a sidewalk on that side. So we asked for a waiver because it goes around the whole development on the other side.
And there's, is it fair to say that there's no walkways on, on your side?
On our side, yes. Yeah.
Stormwater management system?
Yes, stormwater management system. We're asking for a waiver from this basically because this lot was accounted for in the original development. Up to 80% impervious was, um, assumed for each of the lots. So, and this lot is, I believe it's 50, 56.8% impervious. So based on that, we're not, um, the impervious area was accounted for in the drainage system that was designed for this lot. Again, with the, the drainage stub, um, included. Slant granite, slant granite curbing. We're asking for this waiver basically inside the site. We're proposing, um, the new curb cut shifting the, what's existing slightly. So we'll take up, um, that existing curbing. I believe it's slant granite now. So we'll remove it, stack it, and reuse it as best we can, um, for the entrance way. And then the rest would be just Cape Cod burn.
Okay. What are the other properties over there?
This is what they've been doing.
They've been doing all that too, right?
And then, uh, you do more of like a monolithic?
Yeah.
Retaining walls?
Retaining walls?
Retaining walls. I believe that has to do with the, the, the type. We just wanted to do concrete block. It might be those big two-by-four blocks. I believe the bylaw asked for stone masonry walls. I believe there's some language about that. So that's, that's what we're looking for with that one. Stormwater contained onsite kind of goes with the, the previous stormwater one. And traffic congestion analysis goes with the, kind of goes with the impact studies as well. Kind of all lumps into the same.
So, um, where are you going to, where are you going to put snow on that? Snow removal?
So basically, we have the perimeter of the, um, parking lot. Out to the left of the building and, uh, to the left of the dumpster. It's not shown, called out on this plan, but we'll be sure to add that.
Okay. And I, I know the last few ones, we haven't had a lot of snow, but
Yep.
Something to consider.
Yep.
Uh, lighting, you, you did have in your plans, I think it's in a couple sheets, it showed a photo, photometric plan?
Yes.
Do you have parking lot lighting in addition to building lighting?
Yes. Yes, we do have some parking lot lights and some building lights. Basically, it's on the
Showdown.
So the parking lot light here. Building lights.
Okay.
I know there was, um, for whatever reason, the plan we got, um, from the lighting consultant was not exactly legible. Some of the fonts were too bold or whatever, so, um, we'll get that revised.
Get that corrected, okay? Or improved, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
It may not be, it may be correct, is
You just can't read it.
Yeah, more legible.
Yep, so we'll get that, um, fixed as well.
Has this been reviewed by the fire department yet?
I don't know.
It has been sent out, we haven't.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with like the, the turn radius. If we got a fire truck back out onto the street if they had to go in there.
I, I think they did have on one of the plans, an auto turn.
Yeah, there should be one. Maybe it's sheet 11 or 10.
Yeah, sheet, uh,
Actually, sheet 12. Yep.
Sheet 11 was the photometric plan.
Yep.
It's a little hard to read, yeah. There's a lot going on there.
Yeah.
Sheet 11?
Well, sheet 11 is the photometric. Sheet 12 is the auto turn.
Yep.
Frozen?
For the truck. Frozen, hold on. We're frozen.
Sorry. I was goofing around with the laser, trying to get the laser pointer to work and now.
Me?
Turn signal back on.
Yeah, that seems pretty tight, especially if there's a car parked there.
Are we able to show what you're looking at in the room?
The, everything's frozen, hold on.
Only if Rich can screen share it.
Rich will do it.
Michelle.
Melissa.
Melissa. We lost her. We lost Melissa.
Yeah? Is it her?
Oh, where'd she go?
It's going to be really tight. And look at how many turns they have to make.
Construction.
She there?
F-150s, GMCs, all trucks, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And you said sheet 11?
12.
Sheet 12.
Is she still?
Can you share, you're screen sharing this on, okay.
Is Melissa there? Are they here?
No, she, we lost her.
No, she didn't come back.
I did see her cat creeping up behind her, so she couldn't really call.
All those darn cats have probably walked across the keyboard.
So Chris, you had a comment on the turning movement?
Yeah, so concerns, um, especially if there's cars parked, that does not seem like a sufficient turning radius for the, the truck to get out, unfortunately.
Yeah, we, we showed that they, theoretically, they could turn around. It might make more sense to, for them to back straight out.
I know how much they love doing that.
But again, I think we asked for feedback from the fire department on that.
We can, um, in between now and the next meeting specifically.
Yeah, you might have to reach out to them.
We'll defer to the chief.
Yeah.
So I, I've never, I've never asked this question before and I probably should have. When you have multiple tenants, but you only have one street address, how do you, how do you distinguish between the other tenants in there? Do you put an A, B, C?
Probably be an A, B, and C.
A unit?
Yeah. Or unit one, you, I mean, I, I'm just asking from a 911 perspective. You do need to specify the, the, each tenant. Okay.
Yeah. Responsibility falls on us to provide address.
I don't think it does, I was just curious. I don't know.
Well, we do the, we assign the addresses.
We assign the address for the
Property.
Property, but.
Would it be the assessor or building department?
I would.
I don't know that we've ever done it for like multi-tenants. Um, you know, because we assign the
The building.
We do the building, right?
You know, the, the, um, street addresses.
I, I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, I was just curious.
Yeah, it might fall on the, the property owner.
I suppose the, I wonder if the fire alarm?
I would say it falls under possibly the post office because they're going to want to, to deliver mail and also 911 for emergency services.
A friend of mine just completed a very similar building in Cobbera and I'm pretty sure he's designated them unit one, unit two, unit three.
Okay.
So it has the one street address.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was just a side note, it's not. So, anyway. Okay, uh, did you have any other, I, so, so if I understand this correctly, you just, you just got your comments back from Beta. You're looking to then schedule a follow-up meeting with, with Beta. My recommendation would then be to try and get, um, all those issues resolved prior to the April meeting so that we can, um, close the public hearing and vote on this at the next meeting. I just don't want it, I don't want it to, if at all possible, I want to try and avoid this going into May because we will have, um, we have the potential for board changes in May because we have two, two of our members that, uh, their term, their term does end.
Okay.
I would assume you're running.
Two?
Yeah, two. You and yours is not?
No, just one.
Next year.
It's just one? I thought there was two.
We'll be able to continue this until next year.
Oh, never mind.
We can take as long as we want.
Let's not. Let's not. So again, it would just behoove you to, to try and, uh, my mistake, okay? I thought, for some reason I thought there was two.
No, it's just me.
It's just, just
If you're running for a different position here, elected office.
And choose not to.
Choose not to. So yes, that would have.
If you neglect us.
Very true.
So that could have, yes.
That could, right. I know you're not prepared to talk about, or maybe you're not prepared to talk about any of the, the comments from Beta. Did you see any concerns on there that, um, and, and if, if you're not ready, that's fine.
It's pretty lengthy. If you haven't looked through it, I wouldn't advise doing it.
Yeah, I mean, the ones, the ones that we were kind of questioning, that we weren't really sure how to, what the thought process would be, is the stormwater ones. A lot of them were, I want to say, operation and maintenance.
Okay.
But where obviously we'd provide catch basin cleaning and that kind of stuff for the onsite stuff. Or where the system's offsite part of, I believe it's part of a homeowner's association.
I don't think we have one out there, do we?
Not a homeowner's association, but it was the association that was put in place for this.
Yeah, so the, the town, so the developer went to funk. We pulled the plan board, pulled the bond. We're in the process of hiring an engineer to do an existing conditions plan, then do assessment of the infrastructure, and then we're going to be back to the stormwater because the original intent was the associa, associa, association members, like a homeowner's association, will maintain the stormwater system. So we have to figure out all that, what that maintenance per share cost will be.
Yep.
It's a roundabout answer.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was, I mean, we'd, we'd put it on the, the landowner to manage their onsite stuff, but where it's the offsite basin, I don't, it gets kind of tricky
Yes.
With the different owners.
So I know there's, um, questions with regards to the, um, the retaining wall and its location and, um, proximity to the neighbors. Can you point that out on the?
Yeah, so it's the, it's the bold dotted line on that, that plan.
Okay, so it's on the, the street side?
Well, no.
Oh, no, no. So the neighbors on the south or the neighbors plan northwest? Okay, and then in relation to the neighbors are?
Okay.
What about the residential?
Residential, it's just vacant.
Okay. Got it.
I believe it's the old state hospital. I think that's the same, I think that's the same property.
So I'm going to just screen share the
Please.
Yeah. So if you see in front. So that's the site.
Zoom in a little bit?
Yep.
I didn't bring my glasses.
Across the street from the current headquarters.
So that's the current Island Power light location.
So that's the current
Yeah, this, that line is basically
That's nine and 11.
That's nine 11, yep.
So that's for two, like you're, that's the A and R that we're going to talk about later.
Yep.
So this yellow shade area here is the residential zone, which is a state property site. Then, um, behind it, this is the, uh, location for the septic system, which is the, for the park itself. And this is a stormwater basin, which you can see here needs a little bit of, uh, maintenance work. Then behind it, in the town of Rentham, is the 55 and over development Weaver Farms, which is in this location here.
Gotcha.
Okay. And then, so that retaining wall isn't really going to be line of sight to?
So this retaining wall is right in here.
Yeah.
Not, not really. No.
And then the, the warehouse that's existing already?
This
Yeah?
Right here.
Who's that? We've seen them recently, haven't we?
That is, uh, DeLuca and Sons.
Yep.
Definitely new.
And they had open items with us as well?
No, they're all done now.
They're all done?
Yep, they're complete.
Okay, I don't have any objections to the concrete use personally. Mirror Lake. And then beyond that, there's no real access roads that would provide much inlet into that vacant lot, right? There's just the one off of, by the lake, right? What is that one called? Noah Street?
North.
North Street? Okay.
Well, this is state property here.
Yeah.
State property here. Now, the, it could be the Medica Common Greenway that'll be making its way through here at some point.
Okay. But not through their property, right?
Not through their property, no. The idea is to have a, a shared used path coming up Shire Drive for pedestrian bicycles and then it would come through here, which is the town property where the septic and the
Yep.
Drainage basin is, and then work its way into the state property.
The Rentham portion.
Rentham portion over to, uh, the Rice Complex, Recreation Complex in Rentham.
Okay. So you got a little homework out of you?
Yep, and we're looking forward to talking with Rich and, uh, Beta
Okay.
To discuss all these comments.
Yep.
Folks in the room are for here.
Yep, so, uh, before we do that, uh, Stephen from Beta, did you have any just overall comments? I don't, I don't want to dive into the details because you, you two need to schedule a call to work together.
Yeah, this is a first review, so obviously there's a number of comments, but we expect they'll be able to meet most of them. Yeah, I think we'll dive into the details with the applicant. I think the big question on this project is that there's a lot of unknowns with the existing stormwater system that they're tying into. So a lot of our comments are just about asking for more information and making sure it's going to provide enough treatment to meet the town regulations. But other than that, I think we'll discuss the comments in the technical meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're going to open it up to, uh, to people in the room if you want to grab a microphone and, uh, state your name, address.
Melissa's coming back this year.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Joe Moraski and I'm on the board at Weber Farm Road in Rentham. And thank you very much for sending us a notice, uh, of, of this public hearing. So we are next door neighbors, 55 single-family homes, a senior living center categorized by the town of Rentham. So I've got some questions here. First of all, uh, what's the proposed height of this building? Is this a two-story building?
The eve of this building is about 30 feet tall. It's a single story. We did present a, submit a, a rendering.
Yep, I think I might have those here, hold on one sec.
So none of the tenants will be above a single story?
No.
And so this, this particular building doesn't need to be fire sprinkled at all?
Uh, this one does because it's over the, I believe it's 700 or 500 square feet.
So it will be fire sprinkled. I noticed that you've got, um, a stockpiled area. It's a proposed stockpiled area and I didn't know if it was temporary for construction purposes or whether it was the same as your outdoor steer, storage area of 2,600 square feet. Are they two separate areas? And if so, what, what is being stored in these two areas?
Sure. So first, the stockpile area, um, that's temporary for construction, just for whether it's, um, land, uh, material, gravel, that kind of stuff. Just for the construction phase. And then the outdoor enclosed storage area, totally separate. The applicant just wanted it to store similarly like they've got, uh, at 14 Shire. Just, uh, they've got, I believe they've got like light poles and just miscellaneous, they're, they're a lighting company. So they have, whether it's light poles or just other, um, other types of materials like that they have.
So there's no different products being stored at, at the sister building versus what's being stored at this proposed building?
It should be pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same. Now, you also have on the plan something that is called a sediment basin at the rear of the lot. And you also have something, I believe, a temper, um, let's see, um, some other type of a, um, basin of some sort. It looks like there's two basins of some sort for stormwater management. Well, there's only one.
We do have a, an area, um, for a temporary sediment basin, just for construction. It's kind of on the, the lower end of the site, um, just to, um, grade the site while they put up the building and kind of stabilize the rest of the site, um, to kind of have the area drained to that. And I'm assuming you're meant, you're
I think it's a temporary pond of some sort.
Temporary, uh, sediment basin. I don't see anything I don't see anything.
Our big concern here is water runoff. And our one point seven million dollar septic system, I think, is right behind your building. And when they showed the map for the septic system for the entire development. I think the two septic systems might be actually adjacent to one another. And I think, I'm not sure about this, that that L shaped septic area that Norfolk was describing is also. Part of our auxiliary emergency roadway out to Shire Drive. In case we can't get out on Route one A. So a lot of our residents are over the age of seventy and were slow movers, so. If there's any type of emergency, the auxiliary road is important to us. But even more important is the shared septic system that we have in the back of our development, which abuts. What's going on in Shire Drive. It looks like it's going on in Shire Drive anyhow. So we're very concerned about the water runoff, stormwater runoff there. Now, I know that what was said tonight was something about runoff down Shire. And I'm wondering where that's going and how far down it's going because. We have a couple of the developer that's still working in our site. Has several basins with runoffs and we don't want to really add to them. Unnecessarily, and at the same time, we don't want to negatively affect our septic system.
I mean, as far as the the storm management system, you're not looking to make any significant modifications to what was preexisting?
No, and all we're doing on this lot is basically collecting and draining all of the impervious area to catch basins. And direct it to that system that was designed for the for the park.
Yeah, so they're they're utilizing the preexisting storm management system that was already designed for the. The complex that was previously approved. And so they're tying into that, not necessarily making any new connections or directing flow any differently than what was originally intended.
Okay, and the temporary systems that are going in place are systems only during the construction phase of this project?
Correct.
There was something on the map that said owned by the town of Norfolk that was labeled as three Shire. Is that the?
That's the septic area, right?
That's the septic in the stormwater basin for the industrial park that they're in.
Okay, so that would can, is it possible to put that yellow part of the map back up on the screen?
Yeah, I couldn't put it back.
Thank you.
So this.
So that's three Shire Drive and that's the septic and stormwater for the whole complex. The whole Shire Drive complex.
So if I may. I think where we are and.
It's right here.
It's, I don't know if you can, I can see it here, but.
We see it on the other side.
We can see it on the other side.
Oh, you can see it there too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got another.
If you want to come around and point at it.
Sure, thank you very much. Okay, so this would be us.
Yep.
And we loop around.
Yep.
And this would be our septic system. And then there's an auxiliary road here, and as you can see. It's it's actually outlined on your, so I don't know where your, this is a lot of water in here. This is a basin for us. I think this is wet for you. So your septic system would be in here. And then we have a roadway, our auxiliary road actually goes out this way and that's gravelled. So I don't know. How two septic systems back to back go. I'm not familiar with that. I would imagine it can work, but.
Yeah, definitely something for us to take note of and and discuss in the future, but it doesn't pertain to this lot in in particular as it's already preexisting. And Rich, can you just show them where the lot is in relation to this?
Yeah, so the lots.
The lot is actually this portion right here.
Yep.
Yeah.
So nothing during construction and even after construction, nothing is going to flow down this way. Into into our septic system or into our leaching areas.
Nope, and I just wanted to add just one other thing. On our sediment control plan, we do have perimeter sediment controls proposed. A twelve inch waddle basically at the property line and the limit of work. In closing, all the work. To prevent sedimentation downstream.
Yeah, so to prevent erosion during construction.
Yep.
Okay, so we had, or the developer had a. Trailer here at one time and it looks like it was in this approximate area. And I see this light yellow line as this. So this would be where the town line is.
Yes.
Yes.
And you and Norfolk, this is Norfolk's property here.
Yes.
And this is town owned property.
Yes.
Development property that we took over.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we weren't supposed to be on that process. It wasn't not the original plan.
And during, in the back of your property. Is it possible, I don't know, thirty feet pretty high, would we be able to see? That building from our from our site, do you think?
It's a significant distance.
So I've got, and I've got the renderings up on that screen right up there.
Can you see the one that's there now?
Can you see the building that's there now on seven?
Yes, the people who live in the back of our development. Can see DeLuca's building. So I'm assuming that they're going to be able to see the other one. And maybe even further up the street. So if there could be some more tree screening, we'd certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, so the DeLuca buildings, my guess is depending on where you are in your development in the back there, the DeLuca building may actually.
Block.
Block part of this. And once this building gets built, I don't think you'll see much after that.
Yeah.
Just just seeing from a site perspective.
And it's important to note, whatever tree screening they put in place isn't mature, so it takes time.
Right, I'll be dead.
Oh, don't say that, come on.
I'm looking for my future, future person who will own my home.
We appreciate that.
And I take it that Shire then is a public way?
Not yet.
No.
No. It needs to be completed and then eventually it will become a public way.
Okay, there was some type of a note about restoring the street. In its original condition and that.
Means Shire Drive?
Right.
Yeah.
So the original condition as it stands now is.
Horrible, pretty bad.
Pretty bad. And many of our residents, instead of going out to Route one A and putting their life in their hands in order to go up to the Gulf Station. Or up to Dunkin Donuts to get his coffee or a paper or whatever, who will like to walk in the area. Like to walk over in that area down Shire or over to the neighboring street on the other side, what is it, Sharon?
Yes, Sharon, yep.
And down through there. So whatever can be done with respect to that. Even though we're not paying taxes in Norfolk.
Well.
We appreciate that.
So.
Well, funny little side story to that, to your conversation. We met with the town officials in Rentham when the development was being. On the planning stages and suggested to them that they should actually improve that access way. To a full fledged road with pedestrian access to come through Shire out to to Route one A. And they didn't want to do, the developer didn't want to.
Right, the developer, it was strictly done, from my understanding, as a marketing, for marketing purposes. They didn't think they could market the homes coming in off of an industrial site. That they would come off of Route one A and it would be more marketable to people who were potential buyers. What they ruled out was the fact that people, especially eighteen wheel trucks, coming over the hill by Serenity Hill. When they get to the top by Serenity Hill Nursing Home, these people, these trucks and these cars decide to put it in fifth gear and just fly right down the street. So you're putting your life in your hands when you're coming out of Shire, out of out of out of our development.
Yeah, I know. It was kind of unfortunate. I was hoping they would do it. It made sense, but I'm not a marketer, I'm just a planner.
I know the fire chief wanted to come off of Shire. He thought it was better, but.
Yeah.
It was ruled out. All right, thank you very much. You had said something about a transformer. What is the purpose? Is that generating electricity or something?
Yeah, it would be taking it from the. The electricity that's in the right of way, bring it on to the property and power the the building.
And that, would that be running all day long or?
Yeah.
So that would be like basically a green box, is that for a green box that's like roughly what, three feet, three feet high or something, or four feet high?
Yeah.
Yep, I know what you mean.
And it's probably a step down transformer for high voltage to lower.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I think you had it on like the corner of the entryway.
Yeah.
And it's nicely decorated with vegetation.
Yep, there's some shrubs around it, bollards, so it's protected.
Yep. Okay.
So I I know the chairman mentioned the snow. Can snow be trucked away or I noticed there's not a lot of snow storage there on site, but can it be either trucked away or can it be. Placed on the sister company's lot across the street?
If we if we get that snow, again, all that snow offsite storages, that's an option.
Yeah, I think that's something that is up to the the property owner as far as whether they want to, yeah, if we had like feed upon feed of snow, obviously they're going to have to do something, but. They do need to update the plans to show where they do plan to store some snow.
Does the Norfolk, town of Norfolk have a standard orders of condition that you approve, that you incorporate in the orders of condition? You have standard conditions that maybe deal with snow?
We show this, I mean, we have.
It's a consideration, but we don't like, are you like saying by like square foot?
No, I know that some towns have standard orders that they include in their orders of condition when they approve a development.
Right.
And I didn't know whether you also have that and whether snow would be incorporated into that.
Yeah, I don't know that we specifically call it snow.
No, but they.
But it's something that we always touch on, just being in New England.
And my last question had to do with the traffic. Apparently Shire has become very popular tonight with the two public hearings, but also down the street with Crowley's. Proposal, which is a hundred and almost a hundred and twenty parking spaces and whatnot. And now. The discussion tonight about the MBTA. Overly District further down off of one fifteen and the Pondville area, and then you have the Pondville site. When you take into traffic, when you take into consideration traffic impact, is it just this project as it sits now? Or are you contemplating the rest of the projects as they come on board that are just in the talking stages?
It would just be this project now, but you know. And we did do a traffic study for the crow noise and traffic, didn't we, for Crowley?
Noise traffic for Crowley. We recently updated it for. Pondville, like the the hospital.
Let's double check. I believe with the original park when it was permanent, they did a traffic study at that point. And the uses that are being proposed are consistent with with those uses? Now, again, that was twenty some years ago, so traffic has grown, considering you're there now too. You weren't there before. But.
From like a mitigation perspective, considering it's a state owned highway, what options would we have to like remediate if needed?
Really, I mean, I can't really think of any.
Right.
Because it's actually has. Has good clear line of sight to be able to to get out to to Denham Street, so.
You got the police station right there, too. They can always like wait people in the traffic.
I'm not sure this. It's still not high generator of traffic, this use type.
Yeah, and it should be fall within the.
Within the overall.
It should fall within the overall model for the original, the original model of this business park development, whatever you want to call it, it, this use. And and should fall within those traffic counts that were done twenty some years ago. Yeah, I mean, if it obviously as the as things develop, that's a whole different situation. If it if it gets, you know, that was twenty years ago. And Crowley's is a, that may not have been considered at that time, and we may have to, the town may have to go to the state and look at that.
So as you consider this project, we just asked that you also consider the tandem septic systems and whatever stormwater management, so. We're not getting flooded out if that can be taken into consideration and more trees to hide whatever buildings. Or site for the for the people who live in the back of our development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So was there any other, anyone else from in the room or on Zoom that wanted to comment?
Yep. Can we go to sheet four?
Sheet four. Sheet four is the layout and material plan?
Yeah, so I think when you asked about snow storage earlier, we were on the landscaping plan and it wasn't shown, but it is showed on this one.
Oh, I see, snow stockpile, snow stockpile, okay.
Only concern is if you go back to the landscaping view, you have significant, yeah.
Do you have trees there that would prohibit that?
At least in the back towards the dumpster.
Yeah, so they are a handful of, a couple of feet off. So there is there is area between the shrubs and the edge of pavement for some storage, but. And like you mentioned, between the end of the shrubs and the wall, there is space there as well with no landscaping there.
Yeah, I I'm still a little concerned about the way the dumpster, I don't think you're going to be able to put a whole lot of snow there.
Yeah.
Given the landscaping, I mean, so I would just take a look at that again and just make sure that it's appropriate and and adjust as needed.
I mean, I'd even be okay with modifying the landscaping so that that tree wasn't necessarily there if it gets you additional space, to be honest.
That makes sense.
Okay. Any other? Comments on Zoom, in the room, Beta, anyone? Can you get the microphone?
Yeah, we need it for the people online.
Yeah, they can't hear it when it's recorded.
The people that are already in there, you know, the businesses that are over there, I think they do a very nice job of keeping their places outside nice. And they were always nicely landscaped in the summer. Very neat, picked up, you know, there's a few lots in the beginning that aren't, but businesses that are there, I think, do a pretty good job keeping them looking good.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's any other comments, I will entertain a motion to close, not close.
Continue.
Continue the public hearing for nine lot twenty Shire Drive to. The April ninth meeting, April ninth, twenty twenty four at.
So we have a seven o'clock.
See that? Four David.
Four David that was continued last month.
Right.
We can do seven fifteen.
Okay. Seven twenty, maybe? Give us twenty minutes to. Give us twenty minutes to do that? So we'll continue that to seven twenty. So can I get a, like to entertain a motion for that?
I'm moved.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Melissa?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And this is one that's new, new for, we'll just, I'm gonna, we're gonna start including Christian in on these and get his opinion.
Appreciate it.
Some of these other ones were continued, so it's a little harder to, but, so what would, just what would be your opinion on?
Well, if yes, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do have, so we do have that continued.
Excellent.
And so now...
We're at eleven.
We, now we need to open the public hearing for eleven, Lot 19, Shire Drive.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 48, and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw, Section 310-611. Public hearing will be held Tuesday, March 12, 2024, at 8:00 PM in Room 124, Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, regarding a site plan application for a property located at 11 Shire Drive, Lot 19, Sharon Dusha Park in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Michael Spiegel of Omni Electric LLC, Stone, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of a 7,500-square-foot contractor's headquarters building with associated parking utilities and grading as depicted on the provided plans. The applicant is also requesting an earth removal and storm water management permits. The property is located in the C1B zoning district, reference assessor's map 18, Block 69, Lot 41-7. The application and plans are available for public inspection at the town of Norfolk website or in the office of Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Thursday.
Thank you, Eric. So same person?
Same person.
Representing a different, different client?
Yes, we have Mike Spiegel here from Omni Electric. He is the applicant here. He's pending permits, he's gonna be purchasing this from ILP, the applicant for the previous one, so that's why he's here tonight. So similar to the one we just talked about, this lot is the lot just to the north, previously called Lot 19, Shire Drive. We've got a 7,500-square-foot contractor headquarters building. This one, we've got separated into five different units, and what are you up, are you doing three of them? Is that your plan?
Yes.
So he's gonna do three, three units, and then two will be other tenants. Same, each bay has a twelve-foot wide overhead door with a man door. We've got parking spaces to the south side of the parking lot, loading space in the center of the parking lot, five spaces in front of the building, in front of the entrances. We've got the dumpster kind of tucked away in the corner, and over here the lot. Again, we've got the fifty-foot setback from the residential lot to the west, so we're holding the edge of our work to that fifty-foot setback. We've got modifying the entrance similar to the other project, slope granite curb, replacing that, the existing entrance, and then it will transition to a keep cod berm monolithic throughout the rest of the site. We do have parking lot lights again around the perimeter, as well as four building lights, three on the bay side and one towards the, towards the back. On this, we've got same industrial wastewater holding tank for the floor drains, E1 pump for the sewer pump, domestic water line shown. I believe based on the gross square footage of this building, it's just below the 7,500 square feet, so we believe this one's not gonna be sprinkled, but I believe that's up to the building inspector to make that kind of determination, but I believe there is a stub available if it's needed for this building. For storm water management, this lot is a little bit different than the previous one. For whatever reason, when they did the original design, this lot flowed to the north via swale and the, on the property goes, you can kind of see it off to the west in that buffer area. So basically, we've designed the site to drain towards that corner. We added two seven-four bays just for some treatment of the storm water via sheet flow, and then it will overflow into the swell and go about its way as it was designed. The configuration of the existing swell is, looks like it's, looks like a swell built, looks like it's, like it was designed.
So when you're talking about the swell, are you talking on the north end of the property?
Yeah, so the end of the swell is right here.
Yep.
And it goes this way.
Ah, gotcha.
There's a fence on this property, goes behind the fence, it's just wooded and overgrown.
Okay. So you're collecting all the basins in the southwest corner, and then it's, and then, I got you.
Yep, so we're just conveying it to there, and then it's gonna go about its way.
And then you're, looks like then you're also creating a swell on the north property line behind the building to also drain over to that?
Yep.
Okay.
This roof is kind of gable, so there's a high point in the middle, so...
Do you have a rendering of this building as well that you can show us or no?
I don't think this, I don't think this one has a rendering per se, but we do have plans of the building. There is one.
I mean, I...
There is one. Yep, there is rendering of it, so...
There's a part of it on the...
So, little similar to the other building, but, yeah, okay.
Very similar.
That page right there on the back, it's probably a good example of, yeah, profile view.
Front to back that way. So we've got on the garage bay side, we're capturing the roof runoff with downspouts under the pavement out into the swell, the existing swell, and then to the rear of the building, we're just gonna have downspouts, sheet flow into this swell where it will go down into the existing swell. We've got the transformer shown on the front.
It's northwest, adjacent to the building?
Yeah, the northeast corner.
Northeast side.
Yep.
What's on the northwest side of the building? It looks like it's paved and it's, I don't, it's hard to read, but like twelve...
It's just a paved area. It's, it's a storage area. I mean, it's...
So it's a paved, I mean, because you don't have no parking...
There's no parking there, it's just gonna be an open...
But, I mean, is it gonna be storage or is...
Yeah, sure. So...
If you could just grab the microphone and just state your name and, as long as it's green.
Hello?
Yep.
For the record, I'm Mike Spiegel. I'm the one proposing this project. That is, I think, for special permits, supposed to be over a thousand square feet. We went over it with Rich when we met.
Outdoor storage, yeah.
I think it was, and I think that's just under a thousand square feet for the special permit.
Yep.
So essentially, that's just gonna be like a little paved way. My bays are gonna be, the two end bays on the north...
West.
West side, that's gonna be one large unit.
Yep.
That's gonna, I'm gonna have my electrical company out of there, and that's just gonna be kind of like, you know, I could put a trailer there.
Yep, I got you.
Something like cargo trailer.
Okay.
And that's all it is.
Okay. Continue.
Yeah, so again, similarly, we do have, we do have some screen trees shown between the existing swell and the edge of the parking lot to meet that.
And you got a photometric, and the turny movements look a little better for...
Yeah, this one's a little bit better. It is wider, wider parking lot area, so...
And for the number of units, are you meeting the required parking?
I believe this one, I believe we are.
I think we actually have more than necessary.
It feels like less, yeah, but obviously you're gonna be using the bays as subsequent parking as well, so that adds to it.
Yep.
On the other side, I think we were at thirty-four. Where are we at on this one?
This one, we have twenty-three.
And what's required?
Eighteen. So we do have a little bit of extra.
Okay. So kind of same as last time, you just got the comments back from Beta recently.
Yep.
You'll schedule a call with them and Rich, get all that ironed out prior to the April meeting, and then hopefully we can, if everything's good and everybody agrees, we can try and get, get it wrapped up at April.
Second floor inside or no?
One floor, one floor. No mezzanine or anything like that. There's gonna be just an office and a bathroom in the rear of each unit.
And roughly how high is the eve?
I believe, I believe it's sixteen feet to like the bottom.
Yep.
There's gonna be like a three-foot overhang.
Okay.
And I believe that's sixteen feet, so the front wall's sixteen feet high.
Yep.
And then that's it, sixteen feet high throughout.
And then how...
The roof will be a gable, obviously.
Yeah, and then the gabled roof, what's the highest point of the roof then?
That's a good question.
I don't know that we have that one.
I'm just curious if it's, so if that's sixteen, it's twenty-four-ish?
Yeah.
I would say it's probably shorter than the other one.
Yeah, that's where I was heading. It's a bit shorter, it is taller or shorter than the other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rich, do these guys have to go before the design review board? I know they, they had previous comments about longer overhangs or something.
They do. We haven't...
It was sent on February 22nd, I haven't received a response from them.
So hopefully we get them to meet between now and then.
Okay. Steven from Beta, did you have any other, did you have any comments on this one that you, overall comments you wanted to share? I know you need to work it out later.
Well, ultimately, most of the comments for, many of the comments for nine Shire Drive apply to this project as well, so as with the previous one, we'll work it out in the technical meeting.
Yep, sounds great. Before we open it up to the public, do any other comments, questions from the board members?
Nope.
Okay, anybody on Zoom or in the room have a question, concern, comment? Nope. See none?
Nobody on Zoom.
And nobody on Zoom, so any, any other final words before we continue? Okay. All right, we will, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue eleven, Lot 19, Shire Drive, to the April ninth, 2024 meeting, and we do seven forty?
Sure.
Okay. Can I get...
It's a move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, well, it has been seconded and moved, we'll do a roll call vote, we lost Melissa again, so that's fine, I mean, we can still vote with what we have here. So Gary?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and Chris's opinion, yes. Eventually, we're working on getting the associate member voting, we talked about that. So, okay, great, thank you. All right, so that concludes our public hearings for this evening.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, see you soon.
Very much.
So that takes us into new business, nine and eleven Shire Drive A&R Plan.
I've never heard those numbers before.
Yeah, it's a busy night for seven and nine Shire Drive.
So it was previously combined, now we're looking to divide it. It was divided, it was combined, now we're dividing it again.
Correct.
Essentially. And nothing we can do or say, really, we're just looking to look at it, take an endorsement, go from there.
What about the no backsies clause?
Nope.
I mean, we wrote that out of the bylaw.
It meets the requirements.
Yeah. What was the what?
The no backsies clause?
No backsies clause.
It's actually not an official term, Rich, I just...
It's in Section 3, subsection 420 of the bylaws.
Oh, okay. I guess I'll have to look it up. Yeah, no, it does meet the requirement.
I mean, it meets the requirement to A&R. I personally saw no reason to deny this.
Not endorse?
To not endorse it, I guess you could say, sorry. Any comments, questions? I mean, I'd offer you to speak, but I think you already said it all, so...
I want to undo what was done before, I don't know.
I'd like to motion to approve the A&R plan for nine and eleven Shire Drive.
Second.
Okay, we will do a roll, well, we don't, Melissa's gone, so I guess we don't need to roll call votes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Christian's opinion?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on. Meeting minutes.
Do you want to have them sign it and then you take it tonight, or?
Can I do that?
Um...
No, because you need copies, don't you?
Yes, you guys sign it, I'll run and scan, I'll run and scan a copy.
All right.
Okay.
You got time?
If you want to hang around.
Got like another hour and a half.
No, we don't. Stop.
Me too.
I'd make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 13th, as printed.
It's a move.
Oh, no.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
I just want to run it through my scanner.
Actually, you should not have, yeah, I mean, it's an opinion, but you weren't, you weren't really here, so, okay. Discuss the potential street extreptions for Ariana. So it's pretty quick.
Pretty quick.
What's the thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds. I don't have the plans yet, so we're just holding the spot if we, if we do get the plans by the end of March, there's still time to put it on for May, but we'll see.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
And they have a few things to address still, it's not a hundred percent, just landscape?
No, it's all complete.
It's complete.
We need the ASB plan, but we need to verify everything.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so...
Are we sending Beta out to do that?
No, that's a DPW one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Appreciate it.
Pre, pre, or post, whatever you want to call it, pre-Beta.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the use...
Likely fall town meeting.
Yeah. I mean, that's the time, really, right? Potential snow, if it snows.
Okay.
I mean, just saying. I heard it was still March. Not much snow this year, right?
So you're saying we should wait until 2025?
No, no, no.
Spring town meeting?
No, no, we want to get it done, so, no, we'll get it done. That way we get it accepted on the rolls, and then we can get Chapter 90 credit for the roof, so that's important.
Perfect.
Use table, still a little internal review going on, gonna get it out to you, and then the plan would be to have a public hearing on April ninth.
Are we gonna have enough time to go to advisory and all that and have them take a look at it again and everything?
So the plan, so advisory is April 3rd, so the plan is to have a perfected use table that we can then give to the advisory, so they'll have it, you just wouldn't actually officially have voted yet.
Are you gonna have something circulated to us prior to that?
Oh, yeah, no. I'm gonna, so Bob's going through it right now, I'm gonna take a look at it, I'm gonna send it out to you this week or, well, this week, actually, so, just to check it over, so we have to...
Yeah, Rich and I talked, there was a few updates that needed to be added. There was some strike-through language that was actually missing on some of the columns, and so we just need to update that, then Bob needs to look at it. So I think the intent was to try and get that out, like you said, this week for review for all of us.
And the, and the plan is to do what you suggested, so the, we'll remove the C1 off-highway column, and then we'll just have C1A, C1B, C1D... Column, and then we'll just have C one A, C one B, C one D, and C one A, B, C and D.
Don't even mention off-highway.
Nope.
Right.
Well, they'll be off-highway, but they'll be their own, cause they are off-highway, but we're not gonna have five off-highways.
Yeah, instead of one off-highway that lumps it all together, there'll be four off-highways for each one of the A, B, C, D.
Why do you even need to call it off-highway, why don't you just call it C one A? It's, that's a, that's a section.
So it actually, it's designed as, it's. It is off-highway.
I think it's called that.
The zone is actually called.
It is zones, yeah.
That's what we have to change. It's not on the map as that, but that's the legend, that's not.
No, no, well.
No, it is.
No, it is.
It's, it's called C one A off-highway.
I'm saying, why, why is it called off-highway, why not just one A?
Cause it's kinda tucked back off the highway, I don't know why they did it. All I know is that's where adult business.
But it, we, I mean, we gotta follow that, we've already got it everywhere else, we gotta follow it now.
Um, and then additionally, are you prepared in the fall meeting to add the, well, fall or possibly spring to add the two new overlay districts as well, cause they'll need acceptable uses updated. For the multifamily.
No, that's an overlay district.
That's an overlay, so we don't have to call that out separately in a use table?
No.
I know.
Okay.
No. Yeah.
But that's a good question, yeah.
Wrapped it all together, so no.
Okay.
It's all wrapped together, yeah, so basically long and short of it, Eric, is off-highway is that three hundred foot.
Yeah, right.
And then back off, it's the A, B, C and D sub-districts that are, I mean, getting rid of the C one off-highway and just going A, B, C and D is good, I mean, that's, that's huge plus.
Right.
There's not much difference between the A, B and C and D, so D has multifamily, which the other three don't, and then this district here, which is where they're at, has the, um, auto freight, I think is one special use, the rest of it's all the same.
Okay.
And then the, um, A really has no special use to that area. I mean, I think they, I think their intent years ago was that maybe we would add stuff that would be special, one district, sub-district versus the other.
So do we need to look at cleaning that up?
Um.
Or does it really not matter?
It, uh.
Cause if you're gonna do it, do it before you publish the use table, cause.
We cannot clean that up now, we gotta.
Fine.
Strike forward with this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
And the reason why we gotta strike forward is because of what we did last year, so the.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause end up.
Yeah.
Striking things that should be yeses or no, so.
Right.
And this, these two sites are one of them.
Right.
Or two examples of it, so.
Fair enough.
Right.
So it's definitely a, a corrective measure right now.
So is the incorrect table forcible right now, or is it not? Cause it. Is it revert back to no table?
Contradicts itself, doesn't it?
Contradicts itself.
Yeah, contradicts itself, so.
What's, what's on effect now?
Uh, it is the contradicted table, but, uh.
It's awful.
Our plan is to, these guys, there's times, so, when they're done, town meeting does what we need, hopefully do, votes us in, and then we'll correct it, cause we didn't get any, we have not got any guidance from the AG's office. The only guidance we got from the AG's office was if you're going to spring town meeting, then clean it up, so it was kinda like, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna undo what they already approved, I, I think essentially.
Okay.
Which I was hoping for, though, we would've just gone back to that and then.
Yeah, no, our mess, we clean it up.
Yep.
Yep. That's a good way to put it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Messaging needs to be tight on this one, it's really, listen, we told you we're cleaning it up, and we didn't, so now we're asking again to clean it up.
It's, it was, it was a little dirtier than we thought, so.
Alright, alright, alright.
That's not the message I would shoot, Rich.
No, that's probably not the right way to say it, alright.
The plan is then, float to.
Float, float out a.
Load it out to us at, by the end of the week.
And then just come back in when your, your review comes.
Respond back with the comments.
And then if we need to make an adjustment, we'll adjust it for.
We need it finalized, we need it finalized before April third.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we actually wanna have it finalized by the next Wednesday.
We need to finalize by next Wednesday, cause it's gotta go to print.
Not yet, not yet, but.
But it's still.
But we wanna have the perfected document, if you will.
You'll send that to everybody like we.
Correct.
Set some time to proofread it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're gonna go to advisory with Rich?
I will go to advisory with Rich, you're welcome to join us, April third.
They already did talk about, just FYI, they did talk about, I mean, when they went through the warrant, cause there's a placeholder.
Yeah.
So they did get a preview of.
So advisory April third, then we're gonna do a public hearing.
April ninth.
April ninth at eight, I guess eight o'clock.
About eight o'clock.
About eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
And then whoever is interested in, um, doing a, uh, MBTA zoning, like, present, like, uh, a webinar sort of thing, like, we can record something. Whoever wants to. You know what I mean?
I'll do it.
Alright.
Alright, uh, thank you.
Sorry.
No, I, that's great, no. Thank you, no, I'm like, I love it, I love it, thank you.
Usually you're gonna be like, wow, you know.
So, you can, yeah, so, and then, we'll talk afterwards, though, not, not right now, but. That presentation.
Okay, when does that have to be done by, just? I'm, I'm actually traveling, so I, I gotta, I may have jumped the gun on that.
Whoa, whoa, no backsies.
No backsies clause.
Um, well, I mean.
Sooner rather than.
Yeah, I mean, if we could probably get something done by the end of the month, early April, you know?
Well, sorry, I'll schedule time to work on it next week, and then.
Yeah, we can start working on it, and then, and then we can.
It's the week after that.
Then we can, like we did with the B one, remember, which was COVID, which was kinda nice that we did everything via Zoom.
Oh, yeah, right.
We could set that kinda thing up.
That was pretty good, cause there were multiple people that contributed to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember that.
We kinda wanna follow that model, so to speak.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
Hey, I'm playing.
But the, that B one got lengthy, so that recording that we did was really long.
It was meant to be ten, I think it ended up at seventeen and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, so it was well received.
It was, uh, you know.
It was seventeen minutes?
I watched it like five times.
Really? Did you?
We, we need to just make sure this is quick and concise and.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that, that has to be done before advisory?
No, no, it doesn't have to be.
No.
No, no, that's, that's just a.
Cause advisory's the third.
Yeah.
First and second is Olivia Rodrigo concert. Uh.
Okay.
Just trying to make sure.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be nice that we've, you know, when, when, when we meet with advisory.
Children appropriate, from what I've.
We can tell them that it's already.
You got a sales pitch.
It's already in the, like, it's.
Right, that we're working.
Outreach, this is part of the outreach on the top.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah. And the map?
Yeah. Okay, town planner updates?
Uh, I think that.
You got thirty seconds.
Yeah, it's late, appreciate your time, your effort, your volunteering time, and thank you.
Yes.
Sewer, how we doing?
Oh, wow. So, good, but.
You can't make that face and no sounds and then say good, it doesn't work that way, Rich.
You're taking away the thunder, you're taking away the pop.
Okay, so what's the sizzle, buddy?
So we. Alright, so.
Hit me with the straight.
Hopefully not too many people watching, cause I don't wanna take away from the big.
This is the highest numbers we've had all year.
Reveal, but we did get our earmark.
Oh, nice.
Alright. Okay.
Okay. So what, what would next?
That's nine hundred fifty thousand dollars.
But can be used towards?
Design, engineering and permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
I thought that was not gonna happen, and we just found out. Well, yesterday, actually, yeah, yesterday.
Okay, do we have a, a timeframe by which we have to use it?
Uh, that detail I'm working on, I gotta find that out, the money wouldn't, the, so the money isn't available until the end of this year anyway, cause it's fiscal twenty-five, federal budget.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, so we gotta wait a bit, but, I'll give you more details, for sure. But that was really positive.
It's very positive, it's huge.
Yeah.
Um, what about with regards to the, um, the, the test wells and all that?
Okay, do we have a location?
Well, so the, the.
The research that we've been doing to see if we have a suitable spot for this.
Oh, so, well, we've, I don't, alright, just quickly, we've shifted towards approaching department corrections to.
Okay.
Purchase excess flow they have now that they close a prison. So we would just be running a sewer line connecting to their wastewater treatment plant. So we'll be, we would no longer be building a plant.
Okay, so now we're just, okay.
As regard to the PFAS, right?
No, separate, this wastewater.
Okay, okay.
Wastewater, so we would be a sewer user, so to speak. And then just.
So we would just lease.
Yeah, pay for X number of gallons, and then the users.
And now, is there a possibility that we can swap like for like, I mean, they pay us for use of property, we pay them for use of sewage, like, we just cut what they pay us?
Yeah, there might be some of those, I'm sure, cause we don't, I mean, the town hasn't gotten the mitigation that I've gotten before, so, it could be, uh, yes, that does have to be, uh.
I mean, since I've lived here, it's happened at least once.
What's that?
And then paying us.
Yeah. There is mitigation this year, I think, it's not as much as it, I mean, there's something, but, but yeah, so that would, so the plan and, and the select board did vote, it was a while ago now. I'm forgetting exactly, to pursue this option, because it's, um, cause behind the schools, in terms of the athletic fields, it's not, it's not suitable because it's, there's a lot of silt layer there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the potential, and then the breakout, so it just, it wasn't effective to be able to do so. So.
We'll talk to you guys soon.
But that's, so there's more to come, but that's the, so yeah, that's the soft announcement, that we got the. It's good, the sewer earmark.
That's great, that's awesome.
Yeah. So other than that, that's the, I thought it was, I'm off on my time for this evening, I thought.
That was way more than thirty seconds, but very informative.
It was informative, yeah.
Yeah, exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's great, it's great.
Many other updates? Uh, I can't think of any, I have, right, Southwood? Um, well, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, so the soft update for Southwood is that.
Thank you, everybody.
They're.
Thank you so much.
Pointing in the direction of doing non-residential development, so industrial, white industrial, commercial.
Which is not a zone.
Hmm?
Which.
A lot of it zoned that way already, but, again, I, I made, huh?
How so? It's, it's zoned for that right now?
There's some of those uses are allowed there.
Some of the uses are allowed, warehouse is not one that's allowed, there's still that deed restriction for, um, hospitals, so that's gotta be.
So I did, I did attend a select board meeting to, whatever it was, two weeks ago, just to let people know, cause there's been a lot, well, we've been looking at that site, but their, their analysis in terms of what, from a viable, they feel more confident in this approach. Lined up, and with the, with the, with the hopes that we can negotiate with wall poles, so they can connect into the MWRA sewer, which then would open the door for really companies that have higher jobs, that kinda thing, and, you know, better, I would say better users uh, from a job standpoint, so, and that's what they do, so that's the kinda, that's their sweet spot of development, um, so these.
Like an office park, like that.
Yeah.
Sort of like.
Yeah, be a multi-building park, with some L, but so we're, we're, I made the announcement because a lot of discussion, MBTA zoning, I know all this, we were talking about high density over there, but they're not, they're, they don't see that as a path to go, so I did make that, you know, and mentioned that select board meeting, so the plan is for them to then come back to, you know, to have another meeting. We'll have another community meeting with more on that topic.
I'll just caution, it was less, less office park and more freight slash, similar to like what we just saw for nine and seven.
Yeah.
Where they'd have some multiple bays to, to rent out, and you could combine or divide those bays however you needed to, and so there would still be freight, but would have more of an office park feel to it from a, a landscape and, um, visible perspect, aesthetic.
And just maybe, we could end up like Plainville, where, you know, they had a warehouse building that turned into all those, the Fisher Scientific.
Yeah, right. And there were some, a couple out parcels they were looking at as well, so like, they had a main parcel that would look more like this kind of a business park.
Business park, yeah.
Uh, but then a couple out parcels that could be something different, I mean.
Okay.
So. And there was discussions with Ty into the medical McGreen Way, and what they could do with that space as well. Um, they're very amenable to sidewalks and stuff like that, the two additional parcels that they were talking about could be, um, different types of use. Um, strip mall kind of, uh, usage at one, or, uh, additional kind of, other kind of, um.
Could it be another medical building?
Another medical building was proposed as well, yep. So multiple different uses.
Was that recorded?